Started and welcome everyone. And welcome to the City of Mepetus Planning Commission Special Meeting, June 20, June 30th, 2021 at 6:00 P. M. And as a public service announcement, any members of the public who wish to speak this evening for the public forum? Or for any of the the public hearing agenda items, please do so by following instructions. At the top of tonight's meeting agenda and calling the meeting to order. And then next the agenda item here is a pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Belong, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
The United States of America and to the. Republic for which stands one nation.
Nation.
Under. Indivisible with liberty.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong, we appreciate it. And the next agenda item here is roll call, what Miss the Commission Secretary conduct the roll call of commissioners, please.
Yes, Chair, good evening, everyone, thank you for being here. I'll now take attendance, Commissioner Albana.
Here.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Here.
Commissioner Belong.
Here.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Here.
Commissioner Sierra Della. Commissioner Galang.
Present.
And Chair Tao.
Here, thank you. So, so Miss Medina, do I, is Commissioner Sierra Della absent for this meeting, correct?
Yeah, he is not here right now, I might, I might try reaching out to him because I, he left a message for me this morning and it sounded as if he'd be here. So I'll reach out to him.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your, your outreach. And the next agenda item here is conflict of interest declaration, with the city attorney, please pull the commissioners.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I ask whether any of the commissioners have a financial or personal conflict of interest on any of the items for you tonight? I'll go down the line, Commissioner Gollum.
No.
Commissioner Sandella is not present, Commissioner Albana.
None.
Commissioner Belong.
None.
Commissioner Alcorn.
None.
Vice Chair Chuan.
None.
And Chair Tao.
Yes, I want to go ahead and make a declaration and I'd like to go ahead and read a statement here. I'm disclosing on the record that I represented the property owner at 380 Montego Expressway. Ark Baptist Church in the prior real estate transaction in 2010, but have no conflict with interest in the city's decision regarding this project. Based on, based on the advice from city attorney's office. I have not, I am, I have not committed to any, excuse me, I have not committed to a particular position on this project. And I sit here with an open mind and I will base my decision on the evidence contained in the record, including any legally required findings that must be made. I have no personal or financial interest in the project and have nothing to gain or lose in the outcome of this decision. Therefore, I can fairly judge that this, I can fairly judge the decision before this body and will participate in the decision making process. And make my decision based on the evidence in, in the record. And also want to disclose, I have received a phone calls from the, from the pastor of the Ark Baptist Church, which is the adjacent property to the, to the subject property. Of 308, a single core project, that's before the commission this evening. Right, Mr. De Los Angeles, that's my, that's my disclosure.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Chair. So we're noting Chair Tao's disclosure on the record and that the commissioners were present, reported no conflict in response to the question. If Commissioner Sierra Della is present for the hearing for these items, we can ask him to disclose at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Los Angeles, we appreciate your time. And the next agenda item here is the approval of the agenda and the commissioners, any changes to the agenda? And before, before I, I, I requested any commissioners items or, or changes. Mr. De Los Angeles, looks like Commissioner Sierra Della just joined us. Do you want to go ahead, pull, hold Commissioner Sierra Della, please?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Commissioner Sierra Della, can you please disclose on the record if you have any financial or personal conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda tonight?
No.
Thank you, let the record reflect none to that question.
Thank you, and so now we're, we're completely out of the conflict of interest declaration agenda item. So moving on to the approval of the agenda, of the agenda, commissioners, any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, staff, any changes to tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no, both items will be heard tonight, so no changes on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Director Thomas, and so may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda for June 30th, 2021.
Thank you. Okay, and I, I hear I have a, excuse me, I have a motion by Vice Chair Chuan and a second by Commissioner Belong. And I'll go down the line of the poll, the commissioners for the vote and Commissioner Albana.
Hi.
Commissioner Galang.
Hi.
Commissioner Sierra Della.
Mine.
Commissioner Belong.
Hi.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Hi.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Hi.
Chair, I as well, motion, motion carries seven, seven eyes, thank you very much. And going down to the next agenda item here is approval of minutes. And commissioners, any changes to, to the minutes of June 9, 2021? Okay, seeing, seeing none, Chair has one, one correction on the, on the minutes for June 9, 2021. The portion where it's noted on it as sprinkle system in the text should be reflected as sprinkler system. So the staff will make that change. To that particular item. And Director Thomas, any changes to the, to the minutes?
No, no changes to the minutes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, so may I entertain a motion, please? Can I have a motion from a commissioner, please?
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted with the one correction.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, so I have a motion by Commissioner Sierra Della and a second by Commissioner Albana. I'll go down the line, pull the commissioners for the vote, Commissioner Albana.
I.
Commissioner Galang.
I.
Commissioner Sierra Della.
Mine.
Commissioner Belong.
I.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Hi.
Commissioner Chuan, Vice Chair Chuan.
Hi.
Chair, I as well, so we have motion carries, seven eyes, thank you very much. And next agenda item here is announcements, commissioners, any announcements? Anyone has announcements, if you can just raise your hand? Okay, seeing none, and Director Thomas, any announcements?
Just a few quick announcements, more scheduling items and looking forward to the next couple of months. So as you're all aware, the city council and all city commissions take a break in July, so we'll have no public meeting in July. However, I'm happy to let you all know that city employees will be returning to city hall on August 2nd. We are, we are working, there's new equipment being installed in the council chamber. So that the city council is planning to hold their first, we'll call it a hybrid meeting on August 5th, it's Thursday. It's a special meeting because of National Night Out being held on the Tuesday of that, the first Tuesday of the month. But so they will hold a hybrid meeting, which that means that the council will be in chamber for the meeting and they'll have equipment installed so that it can also be a virtual meeting. So we'll do both, we're going to try out that system and work out the bugs so that I'm, I'm expect that the planning commission will continue to hold virtual meetings in August. But I, it, it looks like by September, we will be able to also hold meetings in the chamber as well. So I just wanted to let you know of, of those upcoming events. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that today was the last day of work for, at the City of Mepetus for our planning manager, Jessica Gardner. I know you were all aware of that, she had made the announcement at our last meeting. But as today was her last day, just wanted to acknowledge her great work here at the city over the past five years and four years. And certainly the, the general plan that was adopted earlier this year will be her legacy at the city. But we really appreciate all of her efforts and all of the time that she spent, I know with, with planning staff, but also with the planning commission. I just wanted to acknowledge her publicly in this meeting, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Thomas, with, as well, we, we appreciate, I think the commissioners acknowledged and appreciated and made appreciated, appreciating notations during our last meeting. And a quick question, circling back to Director Thomas's comments about sort of going back into the in-person type, type of planning commission meetings. Would it, would the setup will be as we knew it from before?
That's, that's one of the reasons why we will lag behind a little bit. It's a little more difficult with the planning commission because we have more members. Of course, early on, as we were discussing this, social distancing was still an issue. And I, I don't know whether that will still be an issue when we go back, I think the social distance requirements have been lifted for those who are vaccinated. So it's one of the things that we'll look at, if we, if we can safely meet in the chamber and we may need to spread out just a little bit. But that, you know, raises other issues just for, for filming and whatnot. So we're going to try it out with the council first and then we will gradually apply it to the other commissions. To my knowledge, the planning commission is the only one that meets in the chamber, so we're really the only one that has that issue. But I'm not really, I don't think we're prepared yet to give the specifics on it. But as we work out the equipment and how things can be set up in the chambers and we'll have more information. But we're hoping by September to get you back in the chambers.
Absolutely, thank you, and also I, well, we have a live audience or with the, the public comments will still be rendered via, via the Zoom process.
Well, that's, it'll be a hybrid meeting, so it will, we'll have the capability, as my understanding, we'll have the capability to do both. We'd have in-house comments as well as virtual comments. And I think initially during August, even the council meetings may have limited seating capacity in, or capacity in the chamber as well. I know that there, you know, we, we want to get, open everything up as quickly as possible, but there's just some logistical issues, not only the new equipment being installed, but just logistical issues. And having everybody come back to city hall and work at one time, so it will be more of a phased process. I, I worded that carefully, the employees will return on August the 2nd, that city hall will not be open to the public for business, my understanding, until August two weeks later. And most of that will be by appointment only, again, to just to allow us to get ramped back up at city hall. And then by the end of August, our front counter will be reopened again in that last week of August.
Thank you, Director Thomas, I think we may have a study session just to requeen ourselves without the tie of tie, thank you.
Many of, many of the details are still being worked out, but I see our building and housing director Sharon Goya online as well. And I've been working very closely with her on, you know, the front counter operations on the ground floor of city hall. And that's been our, you know, there, there are many other considerations in other city facilities, but that's been our primary concern. And then we'll get that up and running and then we hope to take care of the logistics for the public meetings soon.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the comments and the information. And so moving on, so commissioner, circling back, any other, any commissioner have other comments or announcements? Okay, seeing none, and I'll move on to the next agenda item, this is a public forum. Those interested are invited to address planning commission on any subject not on tonight's agenda or leave via Zoom webinar, instructions above. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for the recording secretary's record. And comments may be limited to three minutes or less as an item not listed on the agenda. No responses required from the city staff, what, or the planning commission. And no action can be taken, planning commission may instruct the staff to place the item on their future meeting agenda. So, Ms. Medina, do we have any public in the queue?
Hey Chair, we have no community members in the queue for a public forum.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and with no members of the public in the queue, so we're moving on. I will be moving on to the, the next agenda item. The next agenda is the item, is the public hearing and the first item here is zoning text amendment. And Director Thomas, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's, our first item tonight is a zoning text amendment. This was initiated by the city some months ago and we've been working with the city attorney's offices, as well as others on updating our, again, updating our regulations on accessory dwelling units. Our senior planner, Rosalind Thompson, is here to present the staff report. As you see, many of the changes that we have made, I think this is our second or third time to come back with amendments, but we're, we're just trying to keep up. In many cases, we're just trying to keep up with state law as it goes along, but we'll turn the time over to Rosalind for the staff report on this item.
Mr. Thompson, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. As Annette said, the item currently before you is a recommendation to the city council on potential revisions to the city's accessory dwelling unit regulations or ADU regulations. In this presentation, I will briefly go over the purpose of the amendments and then discuss the changes in further detail, next slide, please. On June 16th, 2020, the city council adopted an ordinance amending sections of the zoning code that regulate ADUs. The amendments to the city's AD regulations were enacted to comply with state legislation in effect at the time. As set forth in government code section 65852.2 and 65852.22. The amended government code sections both impose additional limits on local authorities to regulate ADUs and JADUs. And streamline the approval and permitting process and encourage construction of ADUs. The new statewide legislation took effect on January 1st, 2020 and nullified the city's non-compliant ADU ordinance, next slide, please. So the purpose of this set of amendments is to amend and clarify requirements regarding front yard setbacks for attached ADUs. Separate utility connection requirements and development standards for ADUs not subject to limited criteria and state law. The proposed amendment also removes the efficiency kitchen requirement for JADUs and removes the bedroom limitation for ADUs, next slide, please. Currently, the ADU ordinance lacks a minimum front yard setback for attached ADUs. A minimum front yard setback of eight feet is proposed for attached ADUs in all residential zoning districts except the R1H zoning district. In the R1H zoning district, the proposed minimum front yard setback is at least 25 feet for lots with slopes less than 16%. And 40 feet for lots with slopes greater than 16%, as consistent with the yard requirements in the hillside ordinance. This minimum setback will not apply to ADUs in subsection, limited subsection 1308F. Because those ADUs are governed by state mandated development standards as reflected in the ordinance, next slide, please. So currently, is, is that, ah, thank you. So in our, in our ordinance, it requires that both an ADU and JADU meet or exceed the requirements of an efficiency unit. The requirement of a full kitchen and bathroom for JADUs is in, in the ordinance and would be in conflict with state law. Which states that JADUs can only include an efficiency kitchen that includes a cooking facility with appliances and a food preparation counter and storage cap, cabinets. And also another section of state law, which allows JADUs to share sanitation facilities with existing structures. It is also in conflict, there's also an internal conflict with section 1308. Which allows JADUs to have only an efficiency kitchen and to share sanitation facilities with a primary dwelling. So to align the ordinance with the California Building Code and Government Code and eliminate the internal conflict. Staff is eliminating the reference to JADU from that particular section referenced in the slide, next slide, please. So in the J, in the ordinance, it requires a separate direct utility connection for ADUs and JADUs constructed with new homes. And all non-converted ADUs and JADUs. So staff proposes to eliminate the absolute requirement of a separate utility connection for ADUs and JADUs. Constructed with new homes and non-converted ADUs and JADUs and instead provide an additional option of upsizing an existing utility connection to comply with fire. Water and sewer design standards. So however, a connection fee or capacity charge will still be required and the fee or charge would be proportionate to the burden created by the ADU or JADU. Should an applicant propose that they upsize an existing utility connection. Next slide, please. The existing ordinance creates three review categories for ADUs. One, those that meet the limited criteria imposed by state law. Two, those that do not meet the limited state imposed criteria but meet the standards of our ADU ordinance. And three, ADUs that do not meet all of the standards of the ADU ordinance. As currently structured, the parking requirements and design standards of the ordinance are in separate subsections of the ordinance. Which suggests that those requirements apply to all ADU review categories. However, those subject to state law prohibit local jurisdictions from imposing development standards such as landscaping. Height setbacks and parking requirements in addition to the standards in state law. So to clearly distinguish development standards applicable to those state limited ADUs. Separate subsections for the parking requirements and design standards will be eliminated. And those standards will be relocated to one section in the ADU ordinance, next slide, please. So currently in the zoning code, the number of bedrooms are limited within an ADU. Additional guidance from the California Department of Housing and Community Development has construed a limit on the number of bedrooms as a discriminatory practice towards protected classes. Such as familial status and will be considered constrained on development of ADUs. Therefore, the limit on the number of bedrooms has been eliminated from the ADU ordinance, next slide, please. As for the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA, it does not apply to the adoption of an ordinance by a local government implementing the provisions of state ADU law. Therefore, the proposed ordinance is statutorily exempt from CEQA in that the proposed ordinance implements the state's ADU law. Also, the ordinance amendment is statute, statutorily exempt pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15282H. Because it is, it is an adoption of an ordinance regarding second units in a single or multifamily residential zone, next slide, please. Staff recommends that the planning commission open and close a public hearing, consider the exemption from environmental review under CEQA. And adopt resolution number 21-017, that concludes staff's presentation on this item and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and commissioners, at this point, any questions for Ms. Thompson on the matter? Sorry, let me, let me switch, switch for you on the. Commissioners, any, any questions, I'll go ahead, go down. Commissioner Sierra Della, you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a question, I've seen actually on Facebook where they take a 20-foot container. And they take a crane and put it over the top of the building with a concrete foundation in it. Is that going to be legal then?
To the Chair, so Commissioner Sierra Della, so it would have to comply if, if that's not considered an addition to the structure. It depends upon whether it's considered an addition to the structure or whether that's an ADU. If it's an ADU, then it would have to go through, we've been, the planners would have to review it to make sure it's consistent with our ADU ordinance. If it's an addition, then it requires also to be consistent with our zoning code. And also both, whether it's an ADU or an addition requires a building permit.
Okay, yeah, would be, you know, an ADU.
Yes, so if it's an ADU, it would have to, we would have to review it to make sure it complies with our ordinance and it would also be subject to a building permit.
And since all it's got is a building permit is a concrete foundation, the walls are up and the roofs up already. What, you know, what kind of permit would you need?
So if it complies, if it's, if it's considered a limited ADU, which I refer to, which has certain criteria, it has to be 800 square feet or less. Four foot side and rear yard setbacks and less than 16 feet in height, it doesn't sound like it meets a limited ADU because it's a second story, is, is that correct?
It's a regular, you probably see them and, you know, on, on trucks and on construction sites, it's a container is what it is.
Okay, so if it meets that limited criteria I just mentioned, then it would just require a building permit. If it doesn't meet that criteria, then it would be considered a, an ADU that's subject to additional local requirements. So in that case, it would require, it'd be required that it matched the existing residence. And if it's a container and existing residence is, you know, has vertical siding, then, you know, then it may be subject to other ADUs which require a minor site development permit. Plus the building permit under our zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
Other commissioners have questions for, for Ms. Thompson? Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair, just a real quick question, do any of the, you know, because you have an ADU, do any parking requirements change?
So, no, however, for clarification, limited ADUs, those ADUs that are 800 square feet, that have four foot side. And rear yard setbacks and then that are, and that are not any greater than 16 feet in height, they're not subject to parking requirements. And then also there are additional criteria that, that it should an ADU meet it, it's not subject to parking requirement. So, and that's all mandated by state law, there are things that, you know, the state has mandated that we, we cannot apply parking to. So for all others, the parking requirement is one space and it can be a tandem space, it can be in a garage. But in most situations, parking would not be required because it's not required for JADUs. There are five situations in which an ADU can be exempted from parking requirement and limited state ADUs aren't subject to parking at all.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, that's all the question I have for now.
Thank you, commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Thompson?
But just for clarification, you said that ADUs and JADUs, they don't have park, well, ADUs have parking restrictions, but JADUs don't?
Correct.
Okay.
Or JADUs don't require any parking, let me just clarify that, JADUs don't require any parking because by nature they are within an existing residence. And that's one of the, that's one of the criteria that's exempted from a parking requirement. So JADUs are not required to have parking and then there are limited situations in which an ADU is required to have parking.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair has a question for Ms. Thompson. So one of the slides of which you presented talked about the bedroom count and so there's no quote unquote bedroom limitations anymore, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so is the HUD standards for the occupancy load still applies as it is, it is a federal, federal stipulation? So I think the, the maximum, the maximum load count, if I recall, is two, two per, two per bedroom plus one. So if we are eliminating a bedroom count per se, to say hypothetically, say we have a unit with 10 bedrooms. So that the technical occupancy load is 21, is that, is that, is that plausible?
So to the Chair, so again, ADUs are subject to the building code, so they still need to meet. So they still need to meet building code requirements. We do have Bill Todd and Sharon going from building and they can further explain. What the occupancy limitations are and we also have fire here as well if if that is within fires purview.
Absolutely. So I will probably post the same this the questions to 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 the building. Building folks as well as the fire fire folks as well. So let me ask you this. So this. In in essence, that the the ADU and JDU is in essence is applied to the single family detached developments. That's historically in the in the city. I think that's the way it's intended to apply. Have we? So via the ordinance and the state legislation, essentially we have overridden all of the. All of the prior conditions approvals and and. And that the general plans restrictions and conditions thereof. And so all of the prior EIR considerations are also overwritten in one fell swoop via the state legislations. Is that correct?
To the chair, is that question for me?
That's correct.
Okay.
Director Thomas can jump in anytime.
So the short answer to that question is with respect to environmental, yes, because it's considered. The ordinance is considered statutorily exempt from CEQA. So no further environmental analysis is needed because it's exempt from CEQA. And. And also state law, yes, has. I wouldn't say overwritten, but it's it's given us more guidance. So the state has more. More guidance when it comes to ADU law and and locations. We still have some discretion. Hence, we have ADUs that are subject to local requirements. So we've included design standards. Landscaping standards for those that are not. Mandated by state law. So we do have some discretion and some control. And some control over development standards for ADUs. So it hasn't entirely overridden. Local standards for ADUs, but in in a lot of respects it has.
So from a technical sense, you know, the way the the ordinance is written, you know, every every lot that which has some surface areas. With a setback with a setbacks ability is capable of of handling a. An ADU or a JDU as the words written. So have we has the state mandated or have has a city completed a. Wet and dry utility studies to make sure that we we have the we have the driveway utility. Capacity per se.
So that it's they're not exempted from utility requirements in in a sense that. Certain ADUs still are required to comply with utility requirements. It's. Limited circumstances as seen as referenced in in one of the. Cleanup items that we have in the ordinance. But they're still subject to requirements, building code requirements, fire code requirements.
Understand and hypothetically, you know, if every if every detached residential lot, you know, takes on a ADU. Just hypothetically speaking, you know, that we we are probably gonna be be util dry utility short. Before the summer heat rolls around or or before the extreme drought rolls around, we're probably gonna have a water supply or. Or a sanitation sanitary line capacity issues per se. If if all if all goes out to the mass as as it potentially can be.
Um, that hypothetically can't happen and again, but again, you know, the state has mandated that. The production in the in a variety of housing types, that is the priority.
Okay, we understand that and we appreciate state legislature's kindness and in the. In looking at a goal and without without looking at the ability to flush or or to light it up. Thank you. And. So we also have. Ms. Sharon Goy also Mr. Bill Todd from building. This here this evening and commissioners, do you have any questions for for Ms. Goy or Mr. Todd this evening? I've seen no hands. I'm sorry, Commissioner Belong.
So will the change expedite the process for residents wanting to build ADUs?
Commissioner Belong, so we already actually expedite the process in the current version of our ADU ordinance. But without so. With the exemption of other ADUs from utility requirements. And also the non limitation of bedrooms. Perhaps this could be more of an incentive. But currently as currently written, unless unless an ADU. Does not meet the state limited criteria or our criteria in the ordinance. It it's just subject to a building permit. Otherwise, it's subject to minor site development permit and a building permit and the minor site development permit is processed by staff. So. And we process those relatively quickly, like within a day. So. This just gives more refinement and clarification to the ordinance. And, you know, and you can look at a couple of the changes as also being incentives to construct ADUs because they. You don't have the barrier of the bedroom limitation and also the upsizing of the utilities.
And and so this basically the change makes us more compliant with the state then?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong. Other commissioners, questions for Ms. Goy or Mr. Todd, building? If not, if I can circle back with. Ms. Goy and also Mr. Todd, with respect to my earlier question. On the on the the bedroom count, if if there's no limitations on the on the on the bedroom count per se. So, you know, do we? Do we have a, you know. A federal statute, you know, compliance as well as, you know, as and also the the occupancy load issues per se.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So the the building codes that were under the title of twenty four, which is, you know, throughout California has. Doesn't speak to that. There are some other international codes that do. And we've adopted one of them, which is the International Property Maintenance Code. But generally speaking, for if you compare and contrast, for instance, with. Single family home occupancy, there really isn't one. As opposed to, say, a commercial property, say, an occupancy is a B for business. There's a certain square footage per person allowance and and that defines how many occupants can be in that space. Whereas for single family homes, including ADUs, there really isn't any guideline like that. Even though maybe HUD has some. Conditions, I guess I'll call them, or parameters for occupancy based on bedrooms. This isn't really a HUD issue for us locally, meaning we don't have any any. That that's not our authority that has jurisdiction. It's it's the building codes. And in that, so in our occupancy, single family home. It's really not defined. There are certain habitability issues, of course. If you, for instance, use other rooms that aren't designated usually for sleeping purposes, for instance. Say you you converted your dining room into a bedroom simply by putting a bed in there. As as a homeowner. You know, this is an opinion at this point. I think, you know, if they have some, I don't know, family situations where they have to. Have some additional people occupy that home for a while or an ADU. There really isn't anything in the building code that we could point to to say you're limited to X number of people. And it it does become an issue sometimes with, say, for instance, you have five adults. In a home and each has a car and maybe the garage has been converted. So then you have parking issues in that neighborhood on that street. But. There really isn't anything in the building code. Maybe Sharon could chime in too that we could point to. That would create a limit to, say, an ADU or single family home as far as occupancy based on bedrooms. Does that answer your question, Chair?
Mr. Todd, I think in in a runabout way, absolutely. You know, I think. That the question kind of kind of kind of here circles back to HUD has a occupancy load by by the HUD federal standards. There's two per bedroom plus one. That's the the sort of max max load that does not preclude you from having social events or engagements or whatnot. You know, but the the occupancy load for the for the for the unit or for the residence is the bedroom count. Plus one. So so isn't so.
I guess my my answer, not to overran you, I'm sorry, but would be if it's HUD housing. If HUD is involved somehow in in the housing, which they aren't usually for, you know, same family home ADUs. Then maybe those rules could be applied for HUD housing, but this is kind of a different scenario. It's not really a HUD project. So I I think that that is the key. If we're gonna try to look at HUD and apply HUD requirements, it it's really not applicable.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Todd. I appreciate your.
You're welcome.
Your enlightening. Notations here. So we also have. Mr. Garcia and also Mr. Zamora from Mepitas Fire here this evening as well. So commissioners, any questions for the two gentlemen from from Fire Department? Okay, I don't see any hands raised here. So Mr. Zamora on the on the similar same same line of discussion here. You know, for for ADU and and be placed within the the confines of the lot. You know, if it's attached or detached in some way, shape or form, does that change the firefighting? Methodologies and and carry out of fire safety from from the fire department standpoint?
Yes, first, let me say good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and our members of the planning commission. To answer your question, no, it does not. It does not deter nor does it impede nor does it affect our method of. Dealing with any kind of firefighting tactics or otherwise. For the fire department's perspective, our scope of review is gonna be access and water supply. So that's pretty much the extent of it. I will tell you, though, that there's a Senate Bill ten sixty nine that talks about how. There's certain situations, circumstances where you would eliminate the preclude or preclude the installation of fire sprinkler systems. In certain cases, but which is a good thing. So so they are addressing the needs of the ADU. But that's the extent of our our purview.
Okay, thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Commissioners, any other comments for any of the staff members this evening? Okay, seeing none.
I have one for Deputy Fire Chief. You said SB ten sixty nine requires the ADUs to have. Fire sprinklers?
No, it it in certain circumstances, it precludes, does not. Yes. When it does require it's it's, for example, if you have a house that is ready sprinkled and you're attaching to it, then you would have to extend that. But for the most part, if it's detached, like on the valley floor, then you wouldn't have to put fire sprinklers up, just like you normally would if you built a brand new home. Or if you add on to where you have an aggregate of over thirty six hundred square feet, then you would have to have sprinklers. But. In most cases, that would not apply.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And commissioners, any other any other other questions? Okay, seeing none. And I'd like to thank both Ms. Goy and Mr. Todd. And also Mr. Zamora and Mr. Garcia for enlightening us with the the responses. We appreciate it. And so this being a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to comment on this particular public hearing item. I may do so via the Zoom instructions that's as placed on tonight's agenda. And so Ms. Medina, do we have any members of the public who wishes to speak on the item?
Chair, we don't have any members of the public to speak on this item.
Seeing no public members, the public on tonight's public hearing portion of it, may I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. And may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Siradella and a second by Commissioner Alcorn. So I'll go down the line for the for the vote. Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Galan.
Aye.
Commissioner Siradella. Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
Chair, I as well. Public hearing is closed. Motion carries seven ice. And deliberations, discussions, comments by commissioners. Thoughts and discussions. Open the floor if you'll raise your hand. But Vice Chair.
I'd like to make a motion.
So Vice Chair, if you, before you make a motion, if I can have a. I'd like to make a comment and also sort of discussion item here. Appreciate your your understanding there. You know, I understand the the whole precipice and the concept of the ADUs and JDUs is really addressing the. Very much of a need by this within our state, you know, to. To add housing units, you know, to to the stock. And, you know, this is kind of like, in a in a way, kind of a, we have a significant housing needs. And this particular this particular methodologies, does it help? Absolutely. But it's a little bit like fire fighting a five thousand acre, you know, wild and fires with a. Thickened cup of six ounce waters, you know, one one little, you know, little cup at a time where, does it help? Yes, does it does it really bring it bring it to the to the level that where we can contain? And really envelop the problems. You know, I think this is very much a. An effort that's good, well intended and that, you know, definitely appreciate it, but. Not gonna, you know, bring down the numbers of of need as we as we like to see. You know, I think that this. The state, you know, one fell swoop in the in the legislation legislative process has taken taken out prior prior approved. Prior approved maps, condition approvals and also and also all the. All of the the associated studies and also. You know, limitations and thereof. And, you know, if the state really, really wants to. To make a make a significant dent onto our housing stock shortages, you know, there's something that's really simple to 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 do. For example, as a as a as the state can 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 mandate to 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 cease the the secret. CEQA standards being implemented for a period of time or, you know, significantly reduce the. The fees as charged by the by the counties, municipalities and the school districts. In order to accommodate for the for housing stock to be more. To be to be more advantaged to to take place. And so we're. This is affecting, you know, specifically one single particular single class of of properties. This is really intended for the single family residential units and not and it's not intended as for the for the multifamily units. You know, the the state have many other tools and they chosen chosen this too. I'm not in particular agreement with it. But however, you know, this is one of those darn you do, darn you don't, darn you did done, you did anything at all. Basically, you're. We we have to kind of bring 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 in line with the state. State conditions via local ordinance, but also at the same time, you know, we're destroying the, you know, the prior prior approvals. In one fell swoop. So, you know, this. So, you know, this, unfortunately, this multiple choice question here to to me as commissioner does not present a none of the above answer here. So, you know, from from my perspective and my one vote here, you know, I'll I'll choose to abstain from the vote because I find it no no happy, no happiness on either side of that the yes or no in answer on this matter. So so with that said, I'm, I think I've said enough, thank you very much. Vice Chair, you have a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-017, recommending that the City Council adopt zoning ordinance text amendment Z 821-0003 and amend section 11-10-13.08, accessory dwelling units of the Milpitas Municipal Code to modify regulations related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units citywide to comply with government code sections 65852.2 and 65852.22.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Chuan and a second by Commissioner Alcorn. So I'll go, I'll poll the commissioners for for the votes. So Commissioner Albana.
After hearing the staff presentation and also the need of the city, since it was it had been simplified made it easier without having to have all of those simple requirements with utility connections and everything, I would go for it, so it's a yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Albana, and Commissioner Galan.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Siradella.
Yeah, I'm gonna reluctantly say aye because, you know, the state keeps bringing stuff down on us and you know, to the other cities. You know, have to approve all of this stuff too, like the city of Los Altos Hills, for one, for one. Anyway, I've got an eye on it.
Okay, so Commissioner Siradella has voted aye. So Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuan.
Aye.
And the chair is for this abstain and the reason, as is previously stated in my in my points. So thank you very much, so motion carries six ayes and one abstain for the first public hearing item this evening. And so moving on to the to the next public hearing item, this is the new multifamily affordable housing development at 308 Sango Court. With Director Thomas, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is an item, it's a group of permits that are related to a new housing development at 308 Sango Court, as you noted. This is in the transit area specific plan, planning area, also newly known as the metro area. And there's a lot of very exciting future projects planned in this particular area. So we're glad to see this housing project move forward. Our senior planner, Michael Fassati, is here to present the staff report and give you the details on the the different permits that are required for this particular permit. I'll turn it over to Michael.
Fassati, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Tao, Director Thomas, fellow staff, residents and members of the public. My name is Michael Fassati, and I'm a senior planner with the city of Milpitas, and I will presenting the following application. And next slide, please. The item in front of you is for a new multifamily affordable housing project in the city, which includes a number of different project types. The site development permit, or SDP, will allow the development of a five story podium style apartment building over a one story parking garage with up to eighty five multifamily residential units, which will be one hundred percent affordable for either low or moderate income individuals or households.
Mr. Fassati, if you may speak a little bit closer to your speaker, so you're you're a little bit louder for auditory purposes.
Chair Tao, is that a little better?
You sound like you're you're on earth again, thank you.
Thank you for the heads up. As I was stating, the project has eighty five multifamily residential units, parking for up to forty eight vehicles, and approximately twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty eight square feet of landscaped public and private open and recreation space on a one point one one acre site. The density bonus permit will allow a twenty seven percent in density increase, which is approximately eighteen units over the maximum sixty dwelling units per acre density allowed in the MXD three zoning district. The density bonus permit will also allow consideration of certain specific concessions, waivers, and exceptions requested by the applicant. Lastly, an environmental assessment was created to allow a third party consultant to review and determine the project can be exempt from further sequoia environmental review as required by the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA. Next slide, please. Next slide. There we go. This is an aerial image of the site. Three oh eight Sango is surrounded by Art Baptist Church to the north, Olson Body Shop to the south, dog boarding to the east, and townhomes from the Pace Project to the west. Next slide, please. This is the zoning map of the property. All of the purple areas are zoned Boulevard Very High Density Mixed Use Residential, also known in our zoning code as MXD three. The ten areas located west of three oh eight Sango are zoned Multifamily High Density Residential, also known as R three zoning. Although an assembly use and light industrial uses surround the site, the transit area specific plan, or as Director Thomas pointed out, the future Milpitas Metro Plan envisions higher density mixed use in the immediate area. Next slide, please. The project requires a site development permit to develop the one story parking garage in the five floors of residential units. The following rendering is how the project will face Sango Court, which will eventually turn into a local street and connected tariff court. In total, the project would include thirty five one bedroom units, twenty seven two bedroom units, and twenty three three bedroom units. The apartment is built through a modular construction technique where units are built offsite and transported to the property where they are crane lifted and stacked onto one another. Next slide, please. The applicant worked with staff to design a project that complements future developments on the street. The project in the upper left is three oh eight Sango, the project you're reviewing today. The image on the bottom right is three fifty five Sango, an affordable housing project located across the street that is scheduled to be built in the future years. Both possess contemporary architectural designs with consistent variations of color, materials, and wall planes that break up the building mass. Next slide, please. And I apologize, I think we're having a little technical difficulty to get that next slide, so just bear with us, thank you.
Well, Mr. Fassati, you may want to consider some some music while we're while we're waiting. Thank you.
Sure. The project also includes a first floor level garage. You know, the developer worked with staff to meet the standards of the task, and there's many design guidelines in task. And one specific diet design guideline comes has to do with the parking access points. Tasked in Metro, we're not looking for a garage that can be seen through the public right of way. So rather than designing the garage entry directly from Sango Court, the project includes a south facing garage where it cannot be seen from either the street or sidewalk. So instead of using blank walls, the applicant incorporated glass and durable metal windows, window grids to face the front in order to maintain the high quality visual appearance vertically through the front elevation. Next slide, please. There we are. As demonstrated on the following site plan, the garage entry point is approximately a one hundred and eighty seven feet from the curb and hidden behind the solid waste termination room. The garage is further hidden by a one thousand four hundred and seventy three square foot leasing office, six hundred and fifteen square foot fitness area, and seven hundred and sixty five square foot residential lounge. Next slide, please. Within the site development permit review process, we review the project's compliance with development standards. Public and private open and recreation space, also known as parkland, is a standard all residential developments must adhere to. The project exceeds the requirements for public and private open space. Payment of the task fee effectively pays for two thirds of the parkland requirement. The remaining one third of parkland requirement can be designed into any project. As shown on this slide, the project includes a one thousand and thirty three square foot front pub public plaza, a twelve thousand and three hundred and thirty eight square foot landscape area with walkways, picnic benches, a half court basketball court, and a four thousand eight hundred and thirty two square foot internal courtyard on the second floor. Not shown on this slide, but was shown on the previous slide, is a six hundred and fifteen square foot fitness lounge that also counts for space allocated to recreation space. In summary, the payment of the task fee and installation of over twenty thousand square feet of amenity area will count for meeting the parkland requirement for the project. No other parkland or parkland fees will be required for compliance. Next slide, please. All applications for site development permits located within the task require consistency with the general plan, the transit area specific plan, and a zoning ordinance for staff to recommend approval for the project. For the general plan, the project must be consistent with the goals and policies applicable to the general plan designation of where the property is located. For consistency with the task and zoning ordinance, the project must meet the development standards. And when I say development standards, I mean heights, setbacks, floor areas, among other things. Three oh eight Sango meets a majority of these standards. But since three oh eight Sango is a one hundred percent affordable project, they have the option of applying for a density bonus permit. As stated on the slide, the density bonus bonus permit is intended to encourage the creation of affordable housing by providing incentives to the developer of the affordable housing project. Incentives include a density bonus, parking waiver, regulatory concessions, and additional waivers and fee incentives needed to assist in the creation of affordable housing. The following slides will discuss each one of those incentives, concessions, and waivers as discussed in the staff report. Next slide, please. For example, the state density bonus law allows up to fifty percent bonus for the project that incorporate at least twenty percent affordable units to the low income individuals and households. Since the project includes sixty percent affordable units to low income individuals and households, the project would qualify for a fifty percent bonus. The applicant has only requested seventy seven units per acre, which is permitted for the state density bonus law. The other benefits within affordable housing law are known as incentives are in the form of concessions. A concession is defined as a reduction in a site development standard or a modification of a zoning code requirement or architectural design requirement, such as a reduction in a setback or minimum square footage requirement or any other standard or requirement that results in identifiable and actual cost reductions. The developers requested a concession with the private open space requirement for each dwelling unit. Per the task standard, each residential unit requires a sixty square foot private patio. With eighty five units, the developer would need to to build out eighty five patios or balconies. But since the reduction of the balcony clearly results in identifiable and actual cost reductions, simply pure, simply per labor and materials, the developer is requesting a concession to remove the standard and is requesting to install twelve balconies for ten of the units. Please note, a density bonus is a state mandate. In other words, a developer who meets the requirements of the state law is entitled to receive the density bonus and other concessions as a matter of right. Next slide, please. Similar to the density bonus, the state mandates the city to allow parking concessions for affordable housing projects. As demonstrated within the following table, by task standards, the project would require a hundred and twenty two spaces for residential units plus an additional eighteen spaces for guests, totaling a hundred and forty total spaces. The developer has chosen to invoke Assembly Bill 2345, which updated the California State Density Bonus Law to provide further incentives to affordable housing developers. That also included further parking reductions. In summary, if a developer designates at least twenty percent of the residential units to affordable low income individuals or households, and the site is located within a half mile of a major transit station, they are entitled to park the site at zero point five spaces per unit. For three oh eight Sango, the state mandated requirement would require forty four vehicle spaces. The developers proposed forty eight vehicle spaces, which is compliant with the state density bonus. Next slide, please. Additionally, if a development that qualifies for a density bonus such as three oh eight Sango, they may request additional waivers or reductions of other development standards. A waiver can be requested when a city or county development standard would physically prevent the project from being built at the permitted density and with the granted concessions. Therefore, the developer has requested a waiver for the proposed rear setback. As shown in this example, a twenty foot rear setback is required for up to fifty feet of the proposed building height. Any portion of structure that goes above sixty feet per the task standards requires an additional ten foot setback or a thirty foot setback from the rear property line. Next slide, please. This is the rear elevation of three oh eight Sango. Due to their modular configuration, they are unable to physically modify the units themselves so that they must maintain the continuous setback all the way up the building. If the city had the ability to enforce our setback requirement, the total number of units allowed for the project would be sixty eight, which equates to sixty one units per acre. Since the project includes up to sixty percent affordable housing to low income individuals or households, the project is entitled by state legislature to have a fifty percent bonus or ninety units per acre. The waiver provision is meant to allow the reduced rear setback requirement because the city standard of a thirty foot rear setback of the building would physically preclude the construction of the project and its permitted density. As such, the waiver must be granted. Next slide, please. The additional waiver is regarding the use of compact parking. According to task, compact parking design is allowed in all residential and commercial zoning districts. Projects that are located in the mixed use zones such as MXD three are not permitted to have compact parking. As demonstrated above, the developers proposed sixteen parking spaces as compact, equivalent to thirty three percent of the total parking spaces. Similar to the previous example, the proposed footprint would limit the number of parking spaces to less than forty four, essentially precluding the density bonus granted to the project if we didn't allow compact parking spaces. As such, the waiver must be granted. Next slide, please. Under the state density bonus law, the city may consider other financial incentives such as fee waivers or fee deferral to support the development of affordable housing through identifiable and actual cost reductions. The developer has requested to defer the payment of the Transit Area Development Impact Fee, also known as TAF, from issuance of building permit, when we typically require it till issuance of certificate of occupancy. He has also requested a one hundred percent reduction in the public art fees. The applicant submitted a bright yellow canopy integrated into the building as a public art piece. Although public art was designed into the building, the applicant wishes no other investment in public art be required. Next slide, please. Lastly, three protected trees will be removed. Here are the three trees, they're all Chinese willows, and they're all in relatively poor condition. There is, I visited the site and I noticed a fourth tulip tree that needs to be removed as it's in front of the property, but due to its side size, it's not considered protected. Next slide, please. Findings have been made to support the project. Density bonus findings are a bit different. In order to deny a density bonus incentive, the local jurisdiction must make a finding that the waiver is not necessary to make the affordable housing units economically feasible or that the waiver will impact the public health and safety of the community. Those findings have not been found, which in essence means staff recommend supporting the proposed concessions, waivers, and incentives. Next slide, please. The project has been determined to be exempt through SEQA Section 15194. That's under the Affordable Housing Section, as well as consistent with the task VIR, which was formally adopted by City Council in November of twenty fifteen. Next slide, please. This project was noticed with postcards as well as placed within the Milpitas. This project was noticed with postcards as well as placed within the Melpita's posts and city website. The city received one comment from Pastor Son with the Art Baptist Church at 380 Sango Court. The email was provided to the planning commissioners, I believe. In summary, the pastor is supportive of the city addressing affordable housing, but has expressed concerns regarding the parking reduction and the current challenges property owners experience today parking on Sango Court. The email sent by the pastor's son has been included as an attachment. Although staff respects Pastor's son's concerns, the proposed parking reduction is a state mandate for affordable housing projects. The city is not allowed discretion on parking requirements when projects either meet or exceed the required allotment of very low or low income residential units. For this reduction of parking, the project must have a minimum of 24% units dedicated to low income households. 308 Sango has dedicated up to 60% of the units to low income households, which meets the requirement. Next slide, please. But more specifically, the city has a long-term vision to facilitate transit-friendly development by providing easier access to the Melpita's Transit Center. The following map is an example. The red star is 308 Sango. The blue star represents the Melpita's Transit Center, which includes the BART station. The dashed line right in front of 308 Sango represents a future public street, which currently today is a court that would connect to a trail represented by a green dashed line then to a crosswalk, giving a resident direct access to the station. Although the city hasn't determined the exact circulation grid in the area, the policies of task are leading the city to place public transit options as a priority. Therefore, it would be easier to live in this area without a vehicle. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends opening and closing the public hearing, considering the exemptions in accordance with the California Environmental Equality Act and adopting Resolution Number 21-014 recommending City Council approved Site Development Permit Number SD19-0004, Density Bonus Permit Number DB19-0001, and Tree Removal Permit Number PR19-0029, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes staff summary of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Furthermore, I'd like to inform the planning commission that representatives from building and fire and housing, because building and housing are one and the same, to field questions as well as the applicant Mike Kelly and his team of his architects and his engineer are also here. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fasadi. And so would the applicant like to make a presentation?
I don't, I believe the applicant is here to answer questions. I'm not sure if you'd like to say anything, but.
Okay, so I just want to confirm that they have no presentation so that we were not unduly denying their opportunities. And that that also covers for the applicant team as well, right? Mr. Fasadi?
That is correct, Chair Tom.
Thank you. So well, go ahead, circle back to the commission and anyone has questions for Mr. Fasadi at this time? Just like go down the line and inquire with the with the commissioners. Commissioner Albona, do you have questions for Mr. Fasadi?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I wanted to. I wanted to ask, with this proposed project, will it involve any public funding in the future and have an impact with the residents?
Commissioner Albona, when you say public funding, do you mean direct city of Melpita's funding? Or do you mean like the public funding, state government or federal government?
Yes, yes. Or even the residents.
Okay. Let me see if I can answer. So the city of Melpita's is not contributing any direct dollars to the project.
All right. Why, why, why did they have to ask to defer?
Why, we have a regulation in our zoning code that allows a deferral not of paying the fees, a deferral of when the fees will be paid. Just for example, typically task fees are paid prior to issuance of building permit. The applicant requested and it stated relative, it stated in the staff report that the applicant is requesting to pay task fees, just like any other project, except paid a certificate of occupancy when the development's already built. So just to defer on time when they pay it, not pay before the building permit.
I see, I see. And if they're going to take out some trees, how will this be replaced? And where?
Sure. The staff report talks about 18 new trees being built on site. The majority of those trees will be built to the rear of the property and along the sides. I have, I believe I have an example within the staff report of how and where those trees and the whole landscape plan itself, actually within the project permit. The the frontage, there's not much frontage to plant trees.
I see, I see. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fasadi. Thank you, Chair.
Here, Tom, may I add just a comment? Just adding on to what Michael said for the knowledge and enlightenment of the commission as well. So one of the reasons why deferral of those task fees is often requested or desired by the developer is when the fees are paid upfront of the issuance of the building permit, a lot of the fees can be quite expensive. They're attached to the short-term construction loan, and the interest is higher than it would be on the longer term property loan that would, that they would apply it to if they're able to defer those fees to the certificate of occupancy. So it's, it's a little bit of financing benefit to the applicant as well. And it's one of the things that we're looking as, as we update the metro plan and bring that forward as we relook at the 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 fees, something that the development community will ask us to. As, as Michael says, excuse me, as our senior planner, Mr. Fasadi said, the fees are mediated away. It's just a matter of the timing.
Thank you, Director. And I think that is also one of their benefits for which I like, which they're providing really a low housing for us, for the city, which is very good. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albona and Director Thomas, just for clear for consumption by the the members, the public, and also the transmission, is that the task fees are still running about 33,000, 34,000 a door at this point?
They're actually a little bit more than, I think the actual amount is in the staff report, but it's 40,000, and I don't remember the change.
40,000, if I may, through the chair, of $40,487, I believe.
Yeah. So those are. Thank you. They were updated in 2019 and they're updated annually. And it's they're calculated by the overall cost of the infrastructure that is part of the metro plan or the task plan. And then that's divided by the number of units that are, that are planned in the area, and then that becomes the per unit fee. And again, once we have the plan updated, we, we plan to adjust that fee. It may go up, it may go down. We don't know yet. Well, we're going to take a look at it. At present, it's 40,000 and change.
Change. Thank you. Thank you for leaving that open for, for our ability to adjust. Thank you, Director Thomas. And Commissioner Galan, any questions for, for Mr. Fasadi?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Fasadi, this project will build from scratch, correct?
Yes, Commissioner Galan, it would, they demolished existing two-story industrial building and built from the ground up.
After watching the Miami tragedy, I think last week, many of us, maybe I think everybody's concerned about the structure of the building. You know, how strong, how safe? What type of material they're going to use? Do we have a safety code? Is there a ordinance, city ordinance on on like, let's say, a 30-year-old building structural certifications? Yeah, that's, yeah, please answer that question.
Well, I can share with you this much. Can you, can you hear me okay, Commissioner Galan?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes.
I, although the project's 100% affordable, it's my understanding that 100% affordable or market rate, all projects need to be built per the California Building Code and international codes associated with them. So there would be no compromise in the construction of the project. Does that answer your question? I am trying.
Is the building engineer? No, I mean, the building engineer are here tonight?
Commissioner Galan, so, so the building officials and Mr. Todd and also Mr. Serengoy are here this evening. So we're just, we'll go ahead, a direct question said at the both of them once we're completed with Mr. Fasadi. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Serengoy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Galan, if the questions that you have is towards Ms. Coy and Mr. Todd, we will, we'll get to the questions with, with those two staff members in the, in the, in the next round. So right now, we're just focusing our discussions with the, with Fasadi and the planning side.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a couple here. Do you know how many affordable housing units are in Melpita's now?
Commissioner Joe, I, I, I don't know that answer. I believe that the building and housing director may have that answer for you if he can table that question.
Okay. No problem. And then I just, you know, I have real issues with the parking. You know, more than, you know, what is it, 47 people are going to have cars? If they've got to go to the grocery store and it's across town or to Walmart, how are they going to get there? There's not even any designated parking for Lyft or Uber. So I've got quite a concern about that. And I've got a quite a concern about the setback also. So maybe you can enlighten me a little bit.
Sure. A couple of things, and I don't know if this will answer the question. I recognize your parking concern. It, it's a state mandate allowed by the state of California that if projects may have a certain standard that they build into the project, they're allowed a certain parking type. I've discussed this question with the applicant and just for the education of the planning commission as well as my fellow residents and staff members. The developer is only one part of the project. There is another part of the project or another team in the project, the management team that operates how parking, how the units, who gets the units, how it's ran there. Perhaps if I may defer that question to the applicant, maybe he can enlighten us with some ways of parking management. That's the probably the best I can do. Along that, I do want to direct you to the whole task vision that is to try to get cars off the street and utilize the the transit options that will be made available to them.
And, and through the, through the chair, if I could, could we could we have that letter written, read, read to us so the public's aware of what that our church's concerns are?
Sure. And I, I believe Mr. Fasadi, would you like to read that letter at this point, or would you, would you?
I'd be glad to. I have access to the letter, the letter.
Thank you. Fasadi, I think you're also a little bit away from your, from your speaking devices again. So if we can be, so we can hear you louder as we were before.
If I may, I, I will note that the letter is part of the public record. We can read it, you know, in written form. It is part of the public record and available to anyone that wants to, to read it. I don't know that it's an efficient use of time to have planning staff read an entire red or record into the, into, into the meeting.
Through the chair, I'd also like to mention that the person who provided the letter is also an attendee who's waiting to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Medina. So Commissioner Serengoy, would, would, you will have the, the, the the letter writer in life and person in a short bit, and that's why we won't be able to accommodate it at a little bit later time. Would that be okay with you?
That sure would be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Belong?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so my first question is, is, do you know what the duration of the buildout is supposed to be?
Approximately 18 to 24 months.
Okay. And that's even with the modular building, I mean, with, with, I've heard with the modular, it's supposed to be quicker. Just because it's already pre-assembled and it's more like stack and build or secure, stack and secure, basically?
Sure. I, I believe I've heard it's also faster. I think the concerns are the applicant would have to, one, find a place a decent distance from the city of Melpita's to land those, to land those modular units in bigger form, put them together, and then an even closer place to bring them to the site to build them a little bit more prior to landing them on. I think the time constraint has to do with the construction, moving the, the facilities, moving the pieces there, scheduling the time to get appropriate leases to find locations that you can kind of stack them up. The construction management plan, the shut down the street. But the construction itself, I have also heard is a relatively quick process. The, the backend is all the planning associated with it. So 18 to 24 months, I still believe is.
Does the city have any other examples of modular buildings?
Not that I'm aware of. We have an entitled modular building. That's at 355 Sango. I could defer to the building department if they're aware of any. If you can wait till later and pose the same question to our building department.
Okay. I, I thought that the, one of the hotels on the other end of the city was, was a modular build, one of the newer hotels. And it seemed like that, that took significant time, but the, the other question I have. So, so 3, 355 is also a low-income housing unit as well, or?
It's an affordable housing project also.
It's affordable housing. Okay. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said low income, but affordable housing. And are they under the same requirements as, as 308?
As in, are they 100% affordable or?
Well, I mean, so 308 is asking for a lot of incentives here. Did 355 do the same? And then are they under the same requirements as well as far as the, the parking and, and, you know, and things of that nature, like eliminating the balconies?
Well, two things. One, 355 Sango asked for more incentives, including not defer a reduction of simply waiving the park, the task fees. They, they did institute the same parking demand, though. So they parked at a point five units also.
I'm sorry, how many units was it?
A point five parking spaces per unit.
Okay. And to, total, how many units is that project?
I'd have to look into that. Okay. Chair Belong, which I can feel like.
And then I guess this would be more for the architect. So the, the the balconies are being eliminated for, for cost, or, I mean, is it because of the way the building method was is because they're modular and they wouldn't be able to make them off-site? And then bring them to the site, or is that?
Commissioner Belong, I think we're, we're sort of focused our, our questions to the Mr. Fasadi right now. So we will bring the, the applicant on for, for the Q and A sessions with the commission. So if you don't mind, we can hold, hold your question to the, for a few more minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just quickly answer Commissioner Belong's question. The project at 355 Sango Court has 101 units.
And how many, and how many parking spaces were they allowed, allowed?
I see in the minutes, Director Thomas, that it was 95 to require additional parking included to get a total of 95 spaces.
Okay, I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong, and, uh, Commissioner Alcorn.
No questions.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Vice Chair Chong.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I, you know, would like to hear, you know, for the, from the, um, applicant in regards to, you know, the setback as well as the understanding of the parking. Um, and then I don't know if Mr. Fasadi can answer this question or probably wait for the applicant as well. Uh, just want to understand, um, is there a comparable project similar to the one that's being built now? Um, and, uh, that's currently existing and, um, any, you know, feedback or successes in that project?
I can't answer that right now. I, I'm thinking about, uh, senior lifestyles on South Main is currently a, a senior project that's has a reduced parking component.
I think, let me clarify, I, it doesn't have to be within Melpitas. Maybe if there was someplace else that was, you know, designed and built, I'd like to understand that maybe where they kind of got the ideas for, you know, for this particular project.
I, I'll defer to the applicant, uh, Pacific West Communities that deals with affordable housing projects. Perhaps they have some great examples they can share with the team.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's really all the questions I had, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and, uh, Mr. Fasadi. Um, so on this particular project here, um, so basically this is a, a large block map, right? And there's, it's not individually condominiumized, is that correct, as the way it's processed for the, for the mapping purposes?
Uh, correct. There was no, there was no map associated with the application, just basically a site development permit.
And, uh, um, I, I went through these, the condition approvals, uh, it does not look to me to have a, a permanent, uh, a rental project, uh, status. Is that, am I, did I miss that in the, in the, uh, in the, in the resolutions or in the, uh? So in other words, this is, this is designed as a rental, uh, rental project and it would, you know, with, and a lot of considerations here is for rental project. Uh, we just want to make sure that, um, you know, going forward in perpetuity, uh, this is the, the consideration that which we will, will be looking at for, in the long, for a long time.
Sure, it, since there's no map associated with it, there's no condominium conversion or any, you couldn't sell any of the units. Um, but what I do have in the resolution is a, a retain affordability condition that requires the developer, whoever the developer may be, shall agree to with the city to have affordable units for more than fifty years or longer on the project. So the only way it could be sold is if the whole project was sold to another entity.
Sure, and it, but it does not have a preclusion from, uh, from a, a future ownership to come in for a, uh, a condominium, uh, map at some point in time, uh, if the conditions were not placed as such.
Well, if a condominium map was proposed at a different time, the whole resolution would have to be re-looked at and affordability conditions would be replaced and it probably would come in front of the planning commission again.
All right, and, uh, um, circling back to, uh, one of your earlier quest, uh, comments with regards to the modular design and, and, uh, um, do, is second court capable of, uh, you know, still maintaining some, some level of service uh, for ingress egress as well as the ability to, to operate that overhead crane, um, of some sort? I assume that they, they, they won't be using on-site that, on-site lift, by the way, you say, uh, a, a crane of some sort to, to lift that, lift that the modular units, right? Do the second court have the ability to handle that?
I, I, I believe the single court has the ability. I think maybe a, a better question, um, or a different question that maybe is, how could that occur? If there's, if, in regards to three five five Sango, the city actually has in its ownership seventeen hundred Sango. And there have been some discussions, um, about potentially leasing that property to the developer to allow for staging. That very well could occur with three oh eight Sango if need be.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, if I may to, uh, the, our, our building official may be able to comment that as well. I know with any construction project, they will have, they will require a, you know, transfer, uh, the construction.
Management plan.
Management plan. Yeah, thank you, Michael. So, and that would be part of that so that it maintains, um, passage on that roadway.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director Thomas. So, Mr. Fasadi, in terms of the affordability, you know, we have, we're always looking at it, the percentage of AMI, you know, for the, for the residents that are being considered. So, uh, did the, the developer provide us with a more detailed, uh, um, split out, you know, in terms of a, uh, how many residents in that sort of that very low income bracket, a low income bracket? Or, uh, the, the mod or the a hundred percent, hundred twenty percent of mod, uh, was there any particular breakouts that's provided to those, to the staff?
Uh, outside of just a straight sixty forty, sixty percent of the units would be allocated to households and individuals that have an AMI between forty and sixty percent, and the other forty percent of the units would be to a moderate income households or individuals. Uh, that says, that's the breakout that the city's aware of.
And as a, as a definition, as a, as a mo- moderate, that's a hundred percent of AMI, is that correct?
I believe, and I may, um, confirm with Director Goy on, I believe it's between eighty percent to a hundred, or eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Uh, Director Goy, if you, if you will enlighten us.
Um, yes, good evening, Chair, um, and Commissioners. Yes, for moderate income, the level is basically between eighty percent and a hundred twenty percent AMI.
So for this particular project here, there's no, uh, no specific destinations of how many within that, the eighty to a hundred percent range or, and then a hundred twenty, one hundred to a hundred twenty percent, is that correct?
I believe they showed a total of percentage for moderate income.
Okay, I, I saw the total, but you know, uh, did not, did not have a breakout, you know, in terms of the, the more specifics. Uh, I think whenever, uh, when, when the applicant comes on, we'll, we'll certainly, you know, inquire. Thank you very much for your, for your, uh, for your assistance. Um, uh, Mr. Fasadi, um, is know that there's a, a resident bike lockers, um, on the, on the plants itself, where are the, where is that the locker per se?
Oh, sure. It's on the first floor in the parking garage, um.
Okay. This is more on the, more, if I'm looking at the plans more on the, on the, the right side of the plant?
If I'm not mistaken, yeah, I believe, yeah, as you start going past the, the parking, the parking garage passes it. There, I, I'm.
Okay, so, uh, is that the, the MPOE room that, that this designated as the, the, the bike parking room? Seems like that's the only, only suspect in the, in the floor plan.
Actually, no, if you go to, um, and so we can give the benefit to the whole commission, um, if IT can bring up the presentation again. And we can go to slide number eight. If that's an option. Right there. You can even go back to the previous slide. Okay, we gotta go, let's keep going. There we go, that guy. Right in the middle, uh, Chair Tow, uh, do you see where it says garage entry to the right?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay, if, imagine going through their garage entry and making an immediate right. And you'll see where it says guest, there's, and right next to it, there's the slots. Those are the thirty, um, long-term biking storage areas.
Uh, so those are basically like the, like the boxes that which the bikes are stored within for additional security purposes?
I, I believe so. I may defer to the architect for that. Um, I, I believe there's some bigger, stronger rails that kind of work, but.
All right, um, any proposed, um, access control for the building? Cause the way it, the way the, uh, the, the building is laid out, you know, where the leasing office that looks to act as a, a double as a, uh, uh, double-door entry, you know, into the main lobby and, uh, also from the, uh, fitness and other, other, uh, points of, of the building. There, uh, in stairwell, we can access outside. Um, so are there, are there any of the security, uh, control that, that's, that's mandated, uh, for the residents?
I'd like to defer that to the applicant, meaning it's my understanding, but I'd like to share that the developer is one part of the applicant. They have an operations team, as I don't believe is, is with us. I believe the operation team decides on kind of how access is appropriated.
All right, and, uh, uh, question in, in the sense of, uh, I'll, I'll just, I'll defer this out to, uh, to fire it myself to, to building on this one here. Um, I'm looking at the roof plan, um, looks like we have a number, quite a number of, uh, each vacuum that's that are roof mounted. So I assume these are remote, remote mounted, um, in, internally controlled, uh, temperature control methodologies that's been employed.
Commissioner Taz, that, um, quite.
I'm looking at the roof plan, uh, this is, uh, on your staff report, page ten, the twenty-seven.
Right, I guess I'm just trying to confirm. Are you asking, will each unit have an air conditioning unit? And if they do, will it be on the roof?
So, so these are, so basically these are individual units that are, that are remote, remote units to the, for each individual units, is that correct? For each individual resident unit?
That, that's my understanding. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, is solar required for this particular project?
I'm gonna defer to, uh, the building department on that. I don't believe solar installations required. I think solar ready due to some building codes, um, but I don't want to speak off topic. I'm not.
Okay, all right. Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Mr. Fasadi, uh, circling back to the commissioners and any other questions at, at this time for Mr. Fasadi?
I, I had one more, uh, through the chair. Um, just following up on Commissioner Albana's question. So, so there is no government, uh, I, I know that you said there's no municipality monies involved in the project, but there's no state or federal or any type of government funding or taxpayer money involved in this project? It's all privately funded?
I, I defer to the applicant for that. I can share with you that the city of Melpitas is not contributing any dollars to the project. Uh, the applicant may be applying for some state grants, some federal grants to, as it is an affordable pro- housing project. But, um, no city money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong. And, uh, um, this time I'd like to go ahead, uh, um, bring the applicant and applicant team. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Serdella, you're waving?
Yes, not goodbye either. Um, yeah, I've got a, a, another question. Is there a lot or is there parking on Sango Court in both directions for off-street parking?
You, you're allowed to park on the street on Sango Court. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, and how many parking places do you think would be available?
I couldn't answer that question. I'll, I'll tell you why. You know, uh, as I stated in my second to last slide, there's a, and there's a vision of tasks where we punch through Sango Court, where it turns into a local street. I don't know the number of potential future street parking spaces. Um, I don't even know if they will remain street parking, to be frank. But I know currently that it's Sango Court has, allows street parking all around through the court outside of being in front of driveways.
Yeah, I just was wondering how many would be available right now. And in your personal opinion, you think that these parking spaces are enough for the amount of residents, even though it is close to the, uh, the bart and light rail and all that other stuff? Or am I putting you on a spot? If I am, that's okay.
If I may, you know, our staff doesn't give their opinion. We, we give the, uh, analysis based. So, and I, I just wanted to add too, it's a little tricky to talk about parking on Sango Court at the moment because it's, it's an area in transition. And right now the city or the, the street is primarily industrial as it has been for probably for a couple of decades. But a, as it transitions and we, as noted in the staff report, we've got a couple of approved projects. There's others that are on the way. The city has purchased some property. So the, the change will happen relatively quickly in, in terms of development time. And, you know, it may take five or, or ten years to get everything into place, but, um, it, uh, the change occurs one project at a time. So, we're, we're confident that this one meets the findings, uh, for, for approval, which is why we're recommending approval of the project as well as the, as state law.
Cause you know, I just know on, on my little court, a lot of the residents have more than two vehicles and they park them in the garage and some of them, you know, on the driveway and, and on the street. And if you told our seventeen homeowners that you, the parking is almost cut in half, what would, what would happen? If, you know, if I'm explaining myself correctly. I think it'd be a disaster on the rest of the streets.
Well, Commissioner Serdella, I think there's, uh, there's an element of the, the state mandated and the state allowance, you know, on the legislation. So I think the, the city staff has got their hands, uh, sort of tied behind their back in, in terms of, on the requirement on that end. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Director Thomas, did I, uh, stated correctly on, on that end?
Yeah, I think the long and the short of it is that based, again, it's all based on the affordability. And the state law says that if the project provides a certain level of affordability, then certain, uh, concessions and waivers are allowed. And, uh, and then it's, it's really interesting actually because within the state density bonus law, parking, parking is treated completely separately, uh, separately from the other concessions and waivers. And, and a lot of that again is tied to its proximity to the, the transit station as well as, uh, to, um, bus lines and other transit opportunities that run along Montague Express, say that's within very easy walking distance, just a, a less than a block over to Montague. So it's, as, as Michael presented in his staff report, a lot of those reductions in parking, while they wouldn't, they would not, never work in a traditional neighborhood, in a, a transit oriented neighborhood like this one, then, uh, they, they meet the goals and the vision for the, you know, the eventual development of the overall neighborhood.
Hey, my other question is, you know, I thought I read somewhere that the state has told us that we have to have, I want to say thirty-six hundred affordable housing units here in the city. Is that correct?
Yes, and.
Hear that. I thought I read it somewhere.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if that's the exact number, but you're, uh, now referring to the, what's called the, um, arena numbers. So the regional housing needs allocation, which is given to each city in the state, uh, through the state government down to the regional governments and then down to the communities and, uh, our housing, uh, building safety and housing department will be soon working on the housing element of the general plan, which addresses housing needs in the community. Um, there's a full assessment that's done on available sites for new housing and, and we, somewhere we will have to find the, the places and, and do the analysis to accommodate th- those, uh, additionally, is it thirty-six hundred? Sharon, you probably have the exact number that is our new allocation.
Uh, yes, yeah, the current arena cycle is thirty-two ninety. And the next arena cycle is actually be, uh, six thousand seven hundred thirteen. So substantially more and, you know, currently we're trying to meet the, you know, the twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-three, you know, arena goals already. And then the next eight years, yeah, there's substantially a higher goals to meet.
This arena goal, is it, uh, both just, you know, um, you know, low-cost housing or is it just everything? Or is there a percentage of low-cost housing?
Yeah, so, um, every seventeen years, the state looks at demographic. Yeah, so every seventeen years, the state looks at demographic and economic trends. And they determine how many housing units need to be built to meet demands for households at all income levels. So this allocation I was talking about is for city of Milpitas, and this includes housing across very low income category, low income, moderate and above moderate. So of the current arena cycle, I can give you the breakdown out of the three thousand two hundred ninety units total. Above moderate, one thousand one hundred fifty one, moderate, five hundred sixty five, lowest five hundred seventy and very low is one thousand and four units. So these are the allocations the state is looking for. No, Piers and other cities have different numbers, but they're looking for the cities to you know, provide these housing goals to meet the needs.
Hey, I have another question. What happens to a city that, let's say it's a very affluent city like Los Altos Hills or Atherton down the peninsula or Hillsboro? What do they do? What are they doing? They're just paying the fines or not doing anything? Or are they trying to build low low cost housing in these cities?
Yes, that's correct. All the cities are all trying to meet their arena goals and everybody has allocations across all income levels.
So you're trying to tell me that I'd be able to buy a very nice house in Los Altos Hills for way, way be below market value?
I'm not sure specifically how that city is meeting their renewables, but.
Commissioner Serdella, I would like to probably request that we we would probably be staying on point with a with a project ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think I I realize that I there might be an opportunity here to connect the dots between affordability and parking. So one of one of the reasons that the state provides a parking concession for affordable housing projects is that parking, particularly structured parking is very expensive to build. So by reducing the the parking requirement for those types of projects, it makes them it makes affordable projects easier to build the more they they're able to pencil out. Whereas if, you know, a lot of some cities, you know, you you mentioned a couple of different cities, they might use. It's not always the case, but it's just as an example, they might use their parking requirements to make affordable housing so expensive to build that no one ever builds it in their community. And yet the state is requiring them through the arena numbers to build a certain amount of housing. So the the state is trying to facilitate the additional construction of affordable housing by making it less less expensive to do it. In this case, through by reducing parking and then the other concessions are also aimed at those same goals. So that that sometimes we wonder cycle, why are we talking about giving a density bonus and we're reducing that because your density most gives you more units and yet you're reducing the parking. What's the overall plan here? A lot of it is is exactly focused on the bottom line. How do we make these types of units easier to build and less expensive to build? And one of the big areas there is is reducing the expensive parking requirements.
Thank you, Director. Chair has one one last question from Mr. Versati. I'm looking at the the elevation, also the perspective of the the staff report. Fascinated by the by the that golden sort of irregular shaped corner element. So that is not considered that is a public art, but however, it's not the applicant has has requested that relief from the necessity of implementing a public art. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think it's. Well, one, can you hear me, Chair Tao? I want to make sure I'm speaking.
You're on the earth again, sir.
I appreciate. So again, just we're here to educate the planning commission. The public, every project that's a site development permit and it's over a certain number of residential units is required to meet the public art requirement. The public art requirement states that the developer must either build out public art in the value of one half of one percent of the building valuation of the project. This project, although affordable, may cost up to forty five million dollars. That means the applicant, if he wanted to meet the task standard, would have to develop a public art piece in the value of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The applicant's requesting not to develop a public art piece in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nor pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the public art to the city for a public art fee. But rather propose a metal, yellow, orange canopy that can be utilized as public art as it is seen from the public right of way. I'm hoping that kind of answers the question. It has more to do with the requirement.
So it is a metal, a metal material, right? Correct?
I believe so. You know, I hate deferring things, but when it comes to the development, you have the architect on board that.
Absolutely. I understand the rationale and the so on and so forth. But, you know, the main thing here is really, you know, if you put something up, there's an inherent responsibility to maintain it and make the puppy look good, you know, in the in the process and and I don't I don't care. You you put it up, but if you put it up, you're gonna we're gonna ask you to to make sure we we make we're making some semblance of nice. So thank you, Mr. Versati. At this point in time, I'd like to invite the applicants and the applicant team. So you probably have heard a number of questions that you that probably will request your your response. So Mr. Kelly, I see your I see you there. And so do you have your architect or you'll be this?
I see their names. Luis, are you around? Michael, are you around?
Yeah, I'm on screen now.
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
It's kind of dark here.
So if you would give them a way to introduce yourselves and so you've heard a number of questions from the planning commission and and if you can go ahead and take the lead and first of all, introduce yourselves and the the firm and and also your function with respect to this project and also some of the questions. I'm sure you've been taking notes. If you can just go ahead and start responding to them and we would appreciate.
Sure, I'll go ahead and take the lead. I'm Mike Kelly. I'm with Pacific West Communities and we're the applicant. And Michael is with Architects Orange and Luis is our civil engineer. And what I like to do is just capture, try to capture a few questions that were posed. And then kick it over to Michael and Luis to address. I saw maybe three or four questions I think were directed their way. So if I miss I miss any questions, just just let me know. And I'm beginning to kind of cherry pick the questions, not necessarily in the order that they were asked. There was a a question that was asked relative to our financing and whether or not we'll be utilizing government financing. And the answer is yes. We plan to use a lot of of state financing on this. We don't have the final budget identified, but you know, as Michael indicated, it's roughly a forty five million dollar project. And so we're going to, you know, we intend to use, you know, roughly twenty five million in government financing, state financing, state bonds, which, by the way, is one of the reasons we're here today, because there's a unique opportunity to apply for taxes and bonds in September, should we have the project entitled. There's just some nuances to the regulations that will allow us to be very competitive. And the virtue to the city is that we would not be asking the city for any money, which is very unique for an affordable housing project in the city of Milpitas, to produce a one hundred percent affordable project without any local financing. So that's, you know, that that is one of the virtues of it. And and the idea there is also controlling costs. And that's why some of the questions you asked relative to balconies and art and so forth. For us to be competitive, there's a ratio of cost, you know, versus our financing request. And, you know, we have additional costs, as Ned alluded to, relative to the podium. That really does matter in our ability to garner those financing funds. So that's the that's the kind of financing situation that we have there. And I think there was a question relative to if it's going to be rental or for sale and the longevity of of that. And it is rental. Part of our financing will be utilizing tax credits. And tax credits are only eligible for rental projects and those rents will be restricted for fifty five years. Steed restricted regulatory agreements. The state is looking over our shoulder the whole time, the tax credit allocation committee, as well as SIDLAC, the California Debt Limit Allocation Committee. So they do annual certification checks and, you know, books and so forth. So it'll be a project that will have a lot of eyes on it for sure. And then on that note, all within the domain of financing, Michael mentioned like the forty sixty split with a low and you, Mr. Chairman, you had asked about if we had specified the exact percentages in relation to the to the unit mix. And we have not, but the reason for that is the regulations are still being tweaked. So, you know, what we want to do is commit to what we declared to you already with with respect to the sixty forty, like it will not exceed that. And to be frank with all of you, it'll likely will offer deeper rents. You know, the way the regulations are now, you know, they require some thirty percent AMI rents, which isn't even illustrated here. So the reality is, is our average income targeting will probably be substantially deeper than what you you have here. So what you have there is a is a cap. So the regulation is still being tweaked for the September round, which is why we're just not in a position to identify it because we really don't know what those regulations are going to say yet. But we're comfortable with what we have here that, you know, as long as we fit within that envelope, we'll be able to satisfy the requirements of of the state. Let's see here. Some other projects we have in the area, we have I'd have to look up the addresses if you guys want to get specific and it's not, you know, not not a problem. But we have a modular project under construction in San Jose now. It's roughly three hundred units. The city is a partner in that. We have a hundred and sixteen units currently under construction now in the city of Burlingame. That's a partnership with the city. They dedicated two parking lots there right in downtown. Parking reductions, you know, the whole like conversations that we're having here today relative to concerns on parking. We're also building as part of that parking garage for for them, which we don't use, but it'll be open to to the public. But still, the parking ratio with respect to our project would remain the same. We have another project in Daly City, high density. It is, I think we just completed it and the parking ratio there is about a half to one. And then we have another one in Gilroy and that's roughly two hundred and fifty units. So there are some projects, just, you know, kind of in the area to share with you. And if you'd like any more specifics, I'm happy to to get those for you. And then parking, I think Ned really addressed the parking income ratio head on. Because that really has been the dialogue has been taking place in the state for for quite some time. You know, cities, they they have an affordable housing crisis, right? And the way to solve it is produce more units. And it's parking that drives density and that's that's what drives it. So the only way to increase density and provide more homes is to decrease parking, but you want to find the right balance. And, you know, in this case here, we we believe we found the right balance because, you know, we have high level transit nearby. The whole area is improving. It's be even more accessible, you know, here soon. You know, and our management company, I don't know specifically how they address, you know, the the parking as folks come in. But I do know that generally speaking, it's it's first come, first served. It's one car per unit, you know, irrespective of the number of bedrooms. And it's something that's declared upfront, you know, when folks come in and they want to lease and they want to live here, they say, hey, here's the parking count. They may or may not be taken, you know, and it's a very open, transparent process. So there's no big surprises. And, you know, somebody shows up with two and three cars and and there's an issue. So I'm not.
Kelly, if I can just interrupt you there for one second, I just want to clarify. So so Pacific West does not handle its own internal management. So it's an outside contracted management company that will be on site to manage, correct?
Right. Yeah, well, that's that's right. So we'll be using a Perito Management Company, very well respected management company in the industry. And the reason for that, and we probably use seven or eight different management companies because we work throughout the state. We have over twelve thousand units. So we always wanted to find the right management company for that project. A company that has identity in that marketplace. You know, we don't want to bring someone that, you know, we have projects in San Diego. We don't want to bring them here. We want to use the company that already can draw from, you know, the the bandwidth that they have there in the area. But you're right, that that's that is that is a true saving. We have a management company that we outsource. But we handle all of our asset management issues, all the lifeline issues, you know, debt and insurance and all that. We're our own general contractor, so we have the ability to control costs. We're vertically integrated. But the one thing we do outsource is a property management, and that is why that's something that has worked out very, very well for us.
Thank you for clarifying that. Apologize for your interruption and please keep going.
You're okay. I lost my place. I'll start a little again from the beginning. I'm teasing. So I.
We'll stop you from doing that. How's that?
I think that's I think that's it for me. I don't know if I captured everything. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Michael with Architects Orange. And there were a few things there, like there's a question also to the setbacks. That might be more in Luis's department. And then maybe bike. I don't know if there's a question regarding bikes.
Yeah, there was. Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Heinrich. I'm with AO Architects. I hope you can hear me. Okay?
Not unclear.
Great. So the question on the bikes, you you were right, Michael, that is the location in the middle of the parking structure. We we employ a rack system where one bike is stored on top of the other. It's a very robust system. We use it in all of our projects. Well made. And the top rack kind of slides out a little bit and down, so it makes it very easy to get the top bike off of the one below. And if there's any accessibility issues, that person would be allocated a bottom bike and it makes it easier for them to get the bike out. So that's the way it looks. It's a it's a racking system that has one bike stacked on top of another.
And Mr. Heinrich, while you're while you're on the subject of bike and just want to cut down the questions down the road is so you you have obviously have experience with this particular bike systems. What is the security, the rope, how robust is the security? If someone wants to vandalize or 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 steal?
Right. So they're individually locked bikes on the rack. The parking structure and the site is fenced off and gated. So public is not encouraged and strongly discouraged to go into the parking structure. So that precludes public. You'd have other tenants that might want to cause trouble, but the bikes are locked. Individually, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the other question that I recall, and you may have touched on this, Mike, but the question of why we couldn't do balconies. And probably answered in a couple of ways. If we had to do balconies on every unit, we couldn't meet the unit goal. If if you really look at the plan, while it looks like it has a lot of space and open area, and it does, the construction is very very tight. If we had to put balconies for every unit, it would really cut into our our square footage of building. And we'd have to reduce our unit count. And we can't do that. Also, it is a modular construction and they don't come with balconies included. It's a very unique system and the whole module comes and is lifted by crane, one after the other, and they just don't come with balconies. And it's I won't say impossible to add a balcony after it's built, but that kind of defeats the purpose of a modular construction when you're having to construct things after you've built the building. So for those two reasons, we don't do balconies in this project on these types of projects. Because of the nuances of the the deck, we were able to provide ten balconies on units. On these types of projects, because of the nuances of the the deck, we were able to provide ten balconies on units. And we're hap- you know, happy to find opportunities like that when we can on projects. I think I touched on this just now, but there was a question about how we secure the building. And it is really an operational issue, but the doors are locked. We use a key fob control, so public cannot get in. Only tenants can access the doors individually. And again, there's a a gate and automobile gate at the entry drive and a and a gate on the greenway on the east side, so the site is secured from public.
So can you also, while you're at it, kind of address, you have security cameras and and monitoring systems? If you can address that as well?
I'm I'm not very familiar with it. I do know that the the operators on these projects use security cameras, but I don't know the extent or can't describe them.
Thank you.
So those are the, those are the questions I remember that needed responses. I li- I just would like to say, we we've met with city previously. There was concerns about earlier plans. We addressed the issues of the privacy of the parking entry, having a a parking area that can circulate properly. Providing a a large amount of open space. Oh, the other question was the the setback and the step back. So again, this project is a modular construction. And structurally, they need to stack to provide the proper structure. If we did a step back, the exterior wall would not line up all the way down the building. And we wouldn't be able to brace it for earthquake loads, the diagonal force or horizontal forces of the earthquake. We wouldn't be able to get the bracing. So it makes it prohibitive to do step backs on a structure like this. And then the the other obvious one is if we did step backs at a certain height, it would reduce our unit count. And we wouldn't be able to get the units that we have because we'd be losing building area. But really, we don't do step backs with a modular construction. It it won't work structurally. And again, defeats the purpose of modular. We'd have to come in and stick build all that. And that's not why we're doing this. We're doing it to save cost and rely on modular construction as much as possible.
That's it. All right, thank you. And Mr. Heinrich, while you got you here, can you address a little bit about the sort of the the trash enclosure, the removal? Basically, that's right at the right at the the sort of the bottleneck point for the for the parking garage. So if if the sanitation folks are are doing their thing, pretty much the the garage is locked in, right?
Not necessarily. The 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 trash truck can stage off to the side and maneuver so that they're staged off to the side. And then they do a pullout service where they pull the bin out to the truck. It lifts and drops the trash and they put it back in. And it's really a, they do it really quick. They do it as fast as they can. It might be five, ten minutes at the most.
All right. Your rooftop looks like mechanical units or just one, one each, one per each unit?
Yes, and you were correct. It's a split system, so that's the condenser on the roof and the pipes go down to a fan coil unit in the unit.
And so the basic, basic concept here is that the ownership, you know, should say that the management takes care of the maintenance thereof. So it's, everything's on the on the scheduled basis?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And one curiosity question here, looking at your, looking at your garage plan here, is that your electrical room opens right out onto a parking space? Is that, it's almost a little bit, little bit of conflict there?
Yeah, I'm going to say that that's probably not correct. The electric room will probably have to have doors on the outside of the building.
Okay. All right.
That's pretty sharp you picked that up.
I I want to keep my eyes sharp.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, and the 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 last question here is to you is that, you know, that, you know, with the fitness with a door going out, you know, to the to the general area. So if if that door is open exercise, which naturally creates sort of that that breach point for
Yes.
for unintended residents. Security systems or what now, this is an alarm bell triggered?
That that would be a, that would be a locked door and only used by tenants who have a fob. And quite frankly, they may end up not using, allowing use of that door anyway. It's an operational option.
That that is not, that is not a if I required exit point, correct?
Correct, right, it's not needed.
Okay, thank you very much. And we also have Mr. Luis Santiago. That's as far as I can see your name there, so if I missed some part.
No, that looks perfect. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. And just kind of going back to some of the questions, one of the questions was regarding parking out on the street and how much was available? Just based on the the length of the frontage, you can have six spaces out in the front. So that's what I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the architect? And the applicant as well as the civil engineer? So I see Commissioner Sarah Dollar raising his hand, so if you will.
Okay, thank you. I'm just wondering how many bicycle parking spots are there?
Thirty four.
Thirty four. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other Commissioners? Okay. Yes, please, Commissioner Blom.
So the the applicant is going to be the landlord of the property, correct? And so will you have employees, facility employees at the site? We're going to have a manager's unit on site? Yeah, yeah. I mean, we would do it anyway, but it's it's required by state law.
Okay, and and is there any security on site?
I mean, no paid security. We're not going to have anybody patrolling the site or anything like that.
Okay, so they, basically, the only employee you would have would be the manager twenty four seven?
And and a handy person, probably. I, we typically have.
Like maintenance?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we have. We don't have an extra, it's not big enough to have another unit for that person, but we have a maintenance person on site every day.
Okay, so as far as security of the building, then it would be cameras and the key fobs?
That's right.
Okay. That's all I have, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blom. And other Commissioners, questions? Okay. Do not see any raised hands. Chair has one last question here for either Mr. Kelly or Mr. Heinrich. Is your 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 golden object in the in the in the front? Can you describe a little bit about the the materials and the, you know, we understand the sort of the the art and non-art aspect of it? Fully understand the rationale. So, you know, my my thing is, I I like this, like it, not a problem. But you know, the the maintenance and also the 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 materials and the, you know, it's it's over required exit by the looks of it. So, you know, we want to make sure the safety ma- matters also being observed.
Do you, do you want to take that, Mike?
Sure, sure. It's identified in the elevation, let me see here, as a I'm looking at it here, just give me a moment, as a future public art installation. So we've indicated something, we like the design of it ourselves, but it, what you're seeing is not fully developed yet. It is shown as being transparent. We've done, we've never done anything as artistic as this, but we have done canopies with perforated metal, framed perforated metal that have a degree of transparency to it. And you can do internal lighting and the lighting effect at night with it, with the panelization of the metal is is very romantic looking, it looks beautiful. So that's kind of our intent. We haven't done the full design development on it. And we'd like to leave some flexibility in in working out the details. The construction of these, we just finished a triangulated canopy on another project. And it was built almost directly from the three D model. So you can export the different panels, send it to a company and they make the panels and you bolt it up to the frame. So it's a, it's a, it's a kind of structural form that you can make now with this technology that we have. So that's that, that's our thought. It hasn't been fully developed yet though, so.
I understand, Mr. Heinrich, you know, you know, this is a sort of an interesting object here. And, you know, it's essentially it's a metallic, structural metallic frame and with a metallic skin, perforated skin technically here. And so we'll probably have some sort of a fire sprinkler system that's going underneath it, maybe. And, you know, the 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 main thing here is, from my position here is, if you build it, you need to maintain it and make this puppy look good and stay good and stayed, stay in an attractive item, not a attractive nuisance, you know. And and it's easily repairable or replaceable. And, you know, if there's any damage to it and and that there's there's nothing like a a piece that that just, that gets damaged and then nobody, nobody gives a darn about it.
Right, no, we'll definitely keep that in mind and we don't, we don't want that either, so we'll design it properly.
You know, I I understand your your applicant's constraints and I'm I'm not intending on, you know, sort of condition on it. But however, this is a record of pub- public meeting and I want to make sure that, you know, there's a commitment to to maintain and flourish this particular interesting looking object.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the for the applicant vice chair?
Hey, just a question around the setback. So, you know, I know you answered some of that, just wanted, you know, one, just wanted to clarify on on any privacy concerns around that? I mean, is it, is that being addressed?
If you, if you look at the site, the closeness of the building that infringes on the setback is only at one corner. It's not the whole backside. The ground floor has no windows facing the back. So we're, the request in my mind for a setback is not that much. The step back, the the larger step back on the upper floors. In my humble opinion, that's really more for light and air. It's not a privacy issue.
Okay.
So, but the the, again, the the setback, it's required to be thirty feet and reading it here, it's twenty three feet, ten inches. So we're only asking for a six foot, two inch relief on just a small portion of the back. So.
Okay.
We're almost complying.
Okay. And then just, you know, going back to the parking, so, you know, you've confirmed it. It's basically an outside firm that's, and it's also disclosed to the residents upon, you know, when they, you know, come and stay that, you know. And I just want to understand, maybe from, you know, some of the other projects that you've worked on, you know, what's, you know? I mean, to me, I I'm still, I'm looking at, you know, primarily, and I'm asking more just based on the land use aspect of it. What has been the reaction on that? And, you know, has that, you know, you know, the fact that it's been disclosed and third party, does that help with the land use aspect of the parking?
I don't know about the 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 land use. So we do, we use a Perito management, or at least that's who we plan to use on on this project, very well respected. You know, the you guys will be very satisfied with them. So it is disclosed, it is in their lease agreement. And we definitely want to disclose it as early as possible. We just make sure we're very transparent about it because some people do have concerns, right? You know, some people do have two and three cars and we don't want any surprises, they don't want any surprises. So we've definitely had people walk away, you know, just because that that program does not work for them. I mean, absolutely. But there's a huge number of people that either don't have cars or flying with one car or and are flying with with this program. I'm not a property manager, I'm not on that side of the business, so I can't say specifically there's never been any issues. But I know that overall, the cities have been very satisfied with the projects that that we've had, you know, that parking reductions and 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 I get it, right? I mean, it it's it's a common concern, right? I mean, you want more density, you want more homes and and less parking. So everyone is working together to to strike that balance. So to the extent that we can be upfront about it and be very transparent about it and just kind of nip in the bud. It really does inoculate the concerns, I think, for the for the most part. And and again, it is in their lease agreement, so everybody knows, you know, what's, you know, what what they plan to 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 get into. But less, I mean, I think there are less cars anyway, right? I mean, I just, from from the projects I'm working on in the Bay Area. A lot of folks really are wanting to be more reliant on mass transit. And I completely understand, it's in previous comments, somebody might want to just go down their favorite restaurant and come back or go go shopping real quick, come back. So I'm super clear on those concerns, but overall, from an operational standpoint, the cities that have expressed concerns prior with these meetings have been satisfied with our projects and the way they've been operated. And and are still, by the way, in future projects with, you know, our colleagues, other developers. The cities are still strongly advocating for parking reductions because that way they get, you know, additional units. So, you know, if if that policy, you know, was that problematic, then they'd be changing the the ways that they do business.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Chair, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Chair has one question for probably directed at the civil engineer. How C three handled on on site?
So so this project is in a special project zone where, you know, you can you can actually treat part of the stormwater with a mechanical means. So eighty percent of the site is being treated with a mechanical system in the driveway. And then twenty percent is being treated with bio retention basins.
So it's it's a mechanical system that 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 treats the stormwater, correct?
That's correct.
Just out of curiosity, looking at the floor, looking at the garage floor plans, where will be the the mechanical system be generally placed?
It will be placed in the driveway, actually. So at the entrance driveway.
So.
It's underground, a manhole structure.
Okay, so basically, it's your, it's your cistern underneath and then and so
Right.
treated and then you have a cling out and and correct locations to allow for this system.
That's correct, yes.
Where where are the collection points for your for your for your runoff?
So it basically goes into into that manhole where it gets treated in there. And a portion of of the building is going to go to the to the bio retention basin directly.
So it's basically your, 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 your your planting areas as well as your your roofing, your roof drains, and that basically goes straight in to the.
That's correct, yes.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, that last question was relating to the to the on-site stormwater treatment areas. Any other questions for the for the applicant team? Okay. I'm sorry. Commissioner Goan, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a question to the engineer and the architect. I know there is an existing building, industrial building, I think, right now. So tell me a little bit about how will you build the foundation from, whether you're going to build from scratch? After watching this. Um, after watching this um Miami tragedy, I'm just concerned about. The building is, is structure, how, how you build that? Tell me a little bit of, you know, um, from scratch. Uh, the vertical foundation, how, how strong are you going to use the steel or concrete? Tell me.
Um, yes, I can, I can go through that. It's going to be a concrete parking structure. The foundation, um typically, most often, um, we call them mat slabs. They're very thick concrete slabs, form a very strong base for the building. Uh, very stable. Uh, we build to California earthquake codes, which are the toughest maybe in the world. Especially in the Bay Area. And then on top of that. That's the foundation, then. The top slab on top of the parking structure is one foot thick concrete with reinforcing steel. And it's so, it's so strong, you can load the deck, call it a deck. With wood framing for, for the apartments. And the, in this case, it will be a. Modular boxes that are built offsite. The modular boxes, and you can load them anywhere on that, on that deck. It's a very strong deck. Very overdone in a way. We're not doing it very minimal and only structuring for the load points. It's a completely structured deck and you can load it anywhere. These.
Okay, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
The modular units, the modular units are really designed so that they can be handled. And trucked from the factory. So they come with a fully framed floor. And a fully framed ceiling. So they're a very rigid box, more than we would normally do. So they put the modular unit on top of the concrete, they put another one on top. So if you can imagine. Every floor is really the ceiling construction and the floor construction bolted together. It's like double the framing that you would normally get with conventional construction. It's, has to be that way because it has to survive the transportation on the truck. From the factory, which is in Idaho, all the way to California. So that's a very rigid box. And then those are stacked up and bolted together. So you have redundancy of framing. It's a very strong building, in other words. I hope that explains it clear enough.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly. Are you, Mr. Kelly? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, regarding about the handicap parking, how many handicap parking in the area? Handicap. Handicap parking, can you hear me?
That's a, a micro question.
Yeah, you're kind of breaking up and I'm, I'm checking our project data, is she here? Give me a moment. Uh, not broken out in the summary, so I'll have to look at the plan.
Through, uh, through the chair, I have four van accessible spaces. Commissioner, go on.
That's four spaces, four. Yep.
Uh, the, the handicap parking which is that located?
It's um on the south side. Adjacent to where the leasing fitness and lounge are. In this.
Is that, is that what you're referring to, uh, Mr. Hi, Rich?
Uh, there are two EV vans, electric vehicle vans, and there's two normal vans. So that makes four.
And they also double, they also double as a, as a, as a um ADA parking?
Yes. So cer- certain amount of um ADA parking has to be electric parking as well.
If I may, or if the planning commissioners um have their, their staff report and the attachments, the, the. Project are attached and it's page nine, you can see the four ADA spaces. Uh, clearly marked on the ground floor uh plan, ground level plan on page nine of the plans.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And uh, uh, to tee off on Mr. Hi, Rich's uh. Uh, discussion with regards to the, the transportation. And so, so basically. Uh, you're going to use a, a mobile, mobile pick that, that'll, that'll lift it up uh to the, to the designated. A drop location, correct? From the street or you're gonna have on site, outside, outside crane?
Uh. We like, they like to set up the crane on the, on the site, so probably on the. I'm getting my north and south mixed up, but the southeast corner. They would probably set up the crane there.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And uh, so with that, with that said, and that crane will stay there until, until all, all elements. Need to be lifted or lifted in.
Yeah, and it does go up pretty fast. I, I, I couldn't guess the time, but it's not going to be there very long.
Okay. Uh, question for Mr. Kelly. Um, so during construction, crew, uh, the construction crew parking. Sort, sort of a. Issue that I, I can see this, this kind of uh, kind of emanates, you know, because most of the gentlemen. Or ladies will be on site will probably be driving in for that purpose. How, how is the part, uh, crew, the, the construction crew parking handled?
Well, you, you want to take that, you're probably more grounded on that than I am.
Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a construction issue. They'll do a construction management plan. And sometimes they have to, I, I believe it's more the contractor's business, but I think they have to get that approved with the city. And um, and fire to make sure that the building is. Construction site is protected. So a lot of times they'll contract out for parking offsite. But there's, there's going to be an overall construction management plan that has to be developed. And all the issues that might impact the community or the city would have to be identified and addressed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any other questions for the, uh, for the applicant and team? Okay, uh, seeing none, I'd like to go ahead and pivot off um to the, uh, Mepita's Fire Department uh with. Uh, Chief Zamora and Assistant Chief Garcia. Um, so Commissioners, just open floor. Um, anyone has questions for, for either Mr. Zamora or Mr. Garcia at this time? Um, I cannot see anyone with raised hands. Uh, if, if you have a question, can you speak up? Okay. Seeing none. Um, okay, well, uh, Chief Zamora and the Assistant Chief Garcia. Thank you very much for your time this evening with uh, uh, with us. We, we appreciate your, your time here.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And the, the next we'll go to um, um Director Boy and also um, in the. And Chief Building Official, uh, Mr. Todd. And uh, any questions from commissions from, from either. For either or both, uh, both uh, staff members? Okay, seeing none. Okay, um, Director Boy and Mr. Todd, thank you very much for your participation this evening. We really appreciate your, your time spent with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And uh, so uh, this has been a, a public hearing and uh, you know, we'd like to go ahead to. Um, open this to a, a public, uh, for public comments. And uh, Ms. Medina, how many members of the public are in the queue?
Chair, at this time, we have two community members in the queue. Actually, we have uh, three.
Okay.
Community members in the queue who'd like to speak.
Thank you very much. And uh, um, Chair will allow three minutes each for the members of the public who wish to speak. And so can you queue up the first, uh, first participant?
Yes, first is Mr. Joseph Sun. This is the, the community member who wrote the email. That was included as public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Pastor Sun, welcome. And you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, um, dear Commissioners and city staff. Uh, thank you for your leadership and services. Yeah, um. We like to say that we support and welcome this project. Um, however, still, we have um issues about the parking. And uh, two units share one parking space. Uh, this doesn't seem realistic. Because there's a um document called um, com- community engagement survey conducted by the city. Um, last year, it says that. Seventy-nine percent of the respondents say they commu- they commute, they commute to work by car. Which means that four out of five people commute by car. And only sixteen percent of the respondents use public transit more than once a month. Which means that only sixteen percent or less rely on public transit for their day, daily activities. So people mainly rely on cars to commute to work and run errands in this area. So this survey just reveal all the reality of this area. And also for the bike. The people do not use bike much either. Only fourteen percent of the respondents, they run errand by bike. So people just need, um, affordable housing units. They, they try to find one, they will move in and they, they need car, they buy car. There is, it's hard to limit them or regulate them not to buy. So, um, also single course of small court. And without much street parking available. Right now, the street parking is already crowded during working hours. As a matter of fact, more than a dozen cars from our neighbors parking our church parking lot on weekdays without proper permission. The low parking ratio proposed by this project worsened the situation and create parking chaos even during weekday. Evenings and weekends when church meetings are taking place. So this area, I can foresee that there will be more development going on in the future. So there will be more cars and more den- more uh density in this uh single court. And we know that, uh, I just heard earlier that uh for three fifty-five single court. There are a hundred and one unit with ninety-five parking spaces. So why don't we just, you know, follow, follow that. Um, ratio, uh, that's pretty much uh more feasible. So. Um, so as that you will consider about the parking issues. We don't want to create a chaos uh like the Pine neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Uh, Pastor Sun, thank you very much for your comment. And if Chair can step in here with everyone's allowance here. Uh, Chair, uh, Pastor Sun, we appreciate your cooperative spirit as a neighbor and also understand your, your uh. Uh, your own parking lot usage factors and the constraint of factors. So allow Chair to, to introduce a, a, uh, I guess, a possibility here's. You know, if, if Chair can request the um, Mr. Fasadi uh to connect you and Mr. Kelly. Here and also with his future management team on site. So I, I think so that we can, you know, have direct, you know, conversation, you know, and so, so that, you know. Impact to your, to your facility will be minimized. And if there's an issues here, then we have a direct conversations and uh. And the dialogue here so that, you know, I think everyone's intent is to be good neighbors. And we, we want to create a neighborly situation. And I think dialogue uh versus the co-violations. Um, and on private properties is where we like to go with this. So if, if, if we can go ahead and try this particular path here. Understand your concern and I'd like to, uh, like to get a, get a neighborhood feel off to a good start. So if I can just uh request uh, uh, Mr. Fasadi in the next, in the next few days of probably. Connecting Pastor Sun and uh, and then Mr. Kelly here. And so that we can, you know, arrange for. For a sort of direct dialogue between the two parties.
Understood and noted.
Thank you very much. And Pastor Sun, thank you very much for your, for your comments this evening. And uh, um. Um, Ms. Medina, uh, can we have the next speaker, please?
Next, we have Ms. Esther um Sue. I'm not certain if I pronounced that correctly, but we have Ms. Esther.
All right, Ms. Esther, and you have three minutes, the floor is yours. Um, Esther, are you, are you there?
Oh, sorry, I didn't unmute myself. Okay.
Well, you, you're allowed to clear now, please, yep.
Okay, so yeah, my name is Esther. Okay. Um, so I just want to, I'm a volunteer and member at the Arch Baptist Church, so I don't want to repeat what our pastor already stated. And we really uh look forward to the completion of the Mepita's natural plan because right now the core is actually kind of empty. It's a semi. Uh, occupy even though during the day it's uh, the parking spot is all uh taken. And so, um, I just want to uh ask the uh, the planning commission commissioners to consider. Uh, especially uh the three fifty-five single court project as well to somehow increase the parking spaces. As you are all acknowledging the deficiency of parking spaces in the court. And so that whatever creative uh ways that you can create the parking uh in the next project. Because it sounds like with this current proposed project that your hands are pretty tight with the state mandate. So, but as a collaborative project, as a whole core, that uh maybe there's some other creative. Uh, way that parking spaces can be created or uh the, in terms of the leasing management. That, that they will, they will be uh giving more leeway to people who are seniors, who are not driving or anything like that. Because our sincere hope is that the parking problem will not become the center or root cause for ethnicity in this. Future developed community. And if that's the case, that would totally defeat the purpose or the original intention. Uh, for the Mepita's natural plan. So that's uh all I have to say and thank you for your uh consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. And as uh, as Chair has just uh, uh, requested staff and putting the. Uh, the applicant and the pastor of the church, you know, and, and to a direct dialogue path. So hopefully that we have a. Um, the co-op collaborative, co- cooperative uh pa- pathways going forward as, as future neighbors. Thank you very much. And uh, Ms. Medina, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Doug Cheshire.
Mr. Cheshire, the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Chair Tao and fellow Commissioners and staff. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Uh, my name is Doug Cheshire and I'm a field representative for the Carpenter's Local four oh five here in Santa Clara County. And on behalf of over eight thousand members, I see denied the reservation before you this evening. In the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for two thousand and nineteen, three oh eight Sango. Was identified as likely being developed with a hundred and fourteen units of low housing. Which was over one-third of the very low and low income units in the planning and permitting pipeline that the city staff claimed. Would help propel the city towards meeting the arena goals. By the two thousand and twenty report, the number of anticipated units for the property was downgraded to eighty-four low income units. Now the planning commission has be forwarded a proposal that drops low income housing production at three oh eight Sango. From what had been a hundred and fourteen units to only fifty-one units of affordable to low income families. With the remaining forty percent of the units reserved for moderate income households. Which in Santa Clara County includes families of four with incomes as high as a hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Low income, uh, low income limits top one hundred thousand for families of three. Which leaves the city well short of the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three arena goals. Additionally, the state and city have made it possible for the development of high density, low income affordable housing. Why isn't Pacific West Communities pursuing federal and state funds that would enable this project to produce a hundred and fourteen units? Of low and very low income housing. At the same time, the Pacific West Communities is aiming to market apartments to families with six-figure incomes. It plans to build new apartments using low-wage workers. Pacific West Communities intends to truck in modular housing units, most likely from Idaho. As for the forty percent of the work that will be done uh onsite, PacWest does not. Require payment of various standard wages and benefits on all their jobs, including this one. So if you expect that most workers were on one half of. So you expect that most workers were on one-half of the prevailing wage and probably won't have health insurance. Silicon Valley contractors employed five thousand fewer people in May of two thousand and twenty-one than they did pre-pandemic. One-half of Santa Clara County households that include a construction worker have incomes that qualify as extremely low, very low or low income. Those families need jobs and jobs that pay the area's standard wages and benefits, employ apprentices and provide health insurance. So again, I ask you to deny this resolution and to ask staff to go back and bring forth a project that helps meet the RENA goals and provide labor standards that enable working families to be self-sufficient.
Okay, Mr. Cheshire, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, and Ms. Medina, any other public other comments?
Yes, Chair, we have one last community member in the queue, Mr. Ervish Kumar Metta.
Mr. Metta, three minutes, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you, all the planning commissioner, the chair, vice chair, for allowing the opportunity to speak and also considering the comments. First of all, I wanted to mention about the Senate Bill number ten. Senate Bill number ten states that as a part of the California legislative information, which was introduced on, which was introduced as a part of planning and zoning, housing development density by the Senator Vineyard. As per the bill, which was amended on the June twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one, the planning and zoning law requires city and and the county to adopt a land use development within the boundaries that includes the housing element. For the existing law requires attached housing development not to permit, not to subject to a conditional use permit or any parcel zone for the multifamily housing. Also wanted to emphasize that how this bill is going to put the restriction on adopting the zoning restricts the zoning ordinances and authorizing the local government to adopt an ordinance to a zone for any parcel for up to ten minutes of residential density per parcel. Also, the bill is projected purpose with the California Environmental Quality Act as well. It is very important that this require, this bill require a specific ordinance to be adopted by the two-third board of the members of the legislative body of the planning commission. So before the implementation of the bill within the city and with the ordinances, it is the planning commission who is to, who has to vote on the SB ten bill before the implementation within the city of Mel Peters. Also to include that the bill's jurisdiction is not just limited to the city. The audience will be applicable to the city's jurisdiction as well as county's jurisdiction properties. Hence, with regards to the further development with regards to the Senate Bill ten and any development within the city of Mel Peters, the parking demand analysis and the data collection would be required. Unless the with regards to the study that is going to be conducted for the site development. The site development requires the parking demand analysis and the data collection based upon the model projected. With the site, with the higher demand than projected, expected that a demand if the
Okay, Mr. Meta, your three minutes is 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 upon us. Thank you very much for your comments in the public hearing portion. Thank you. And Ms. Medina, any other community members wish to speak?
Chair, that's it for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much for the comments. And so this has been a public hearing. And so can I have a motion from commissioners to close the public hearing portion?
And to close the public hearing?
And so we have a motion by Commissioner Alcorn and the second by Commissioner Bilal. And I'll go go down for the for the commissioner votes. Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Commissioner Galan?
Aye.
Commissioner Siridella?
Aye.
Commissioner Bilal?
Aye.
Commissioner Alcorn?
Aye.
Commissioner Tron? Aye, Vice Chair Tron, my apologies. And the Chair as well. Seven ayes to close the public hearings. So commissioners, discussions, comments and the further questions. The floor is yours if you just raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Bilal, please.
So, yeah, so like like the public that we've heard from tonight, I mean, I feel like affordable housing is what we need in Mel Peters. But for for some reason, it feels like this this project is being forced in a location that just doesn't work. The the other, my other concern is that that there's a lot of cutting costs from the applicant. And and that's kind of a concern of mine, too, especially when he said that over half of the project is coming from state funding of bond money. And it seems like everything was getting, it seemed like cost was an issue on everything, whether it was the parking or the balconies or even it being built out of state. That was kind of a concern for me. The the biggest concern for me was the the parking issue. And I've been through, I went and toured the site. And I I know that eventually the site is gonna merge with the street on the opposite side of the property or on the opposite side of the court, I should say. And even with that, I mean, if I'm picturing it in my head, I I mean, I I don't think there would be enough street parking for the amount of people, let's say if there's one car per unit. Three fifty-five is already at almost a one car per unit. You know, ratio there and and the other project right across the street is at a fifty percent, you know, a little over fifty percent ratio when it comes to parking. I too wish everybody would use public transportation. But I I mean, the reality of it is that most people have at least one car. And when you're talking about family units here, there's probably going to be multiple cars. And I just foresee parking being an issue on that little street, even when you merge it with the other street. I'm having a hard time trying
I'm sorry, Mr. Bilan, just one second. I I can hear some puppy puppy sounds in the background. So whoever may have the yelling puppy, if we can go ahead to contain the contain the the sound for for the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Commissioner Bilan, go ahead, please. Apologies for the interruption.
No worries. I I did tour some other sites, not Mel Peters. It was in San Jose of affordable housing units. One of them was kind of in the transit location in South San Jose. It was off of Ford Avenue and the right across from a transit bus depot. And that was a unit that offered one-to-one ratio for each unit. And then, you know, possibly first come, first serve on the outdoor parking. And they had a full parking lot across the street from a transit place. And they, you know, the time that I went was in the mid-evenings. The the transit parking lot was full of what looked like to be residents. I mean, I might be speculating, but I mean, seeing the people cross the street and go into the units, it just seems like, you know, parking is always an issue. We live in Silicon Valley where people go to work and, you know, from from here to San Francisco or here to Oakland or wherever it may be. So it seems like residents are gonna have cars. And I know that Mr. Kelly stated that they're very transparent when the people apply for their leases at these places and tells them, you know, that it's a first come, first served basis. Well, that only leaves the opportunity of people to park on the street. Now with Montague being the other major street there, there's nobody's gonna be able to park on Montague. So that just leaves Sangio Court and or whatever the road's gonna be called after it's transitioned. Me personally, it seems like there's gonna be a lot of residents that are just fighting over parking. And and like the the last public speaker stated, their their property is going to be used as parking regardless if there's codes in place or not. So that's just kind of my concerns with the project. But I'd like to hear from the other commissioners as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Bilan. Commissioners, any other commissioners' comments? Commissioner Siridella?
Yeah, I have the same concerns that Mr. Bilan had. Just in good conscience, I just can't approve this. I know it's a state mandate, but it just doesn't make any sense at all. That's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioners Siridella and Commissioner Alcorn.
I'd like to hear from the planning director or the city attorney. Since state mandates are in place when it comes to parking, one, is that appropriate use of discussion with us if if we can't require more parking? Two, a couple commissioners, in all due respect to them, have expressed concerns and and possible, one just expressed possible denial over parking. Can we do that if there are state mandates in place when it comes to affordable housing with with parking? Like, can we do that? And and can we be talking about it this much?
Well, I'll just comment briefly, Ned, if you don't
I was just gonna say, I turned up to be the attorney.
Director, don't fight with the attorney, please.
No, just just, that's a good point you raised, Commissioner Alcorn. Just, I mean, from a from a state law perspective, the city cannot require more than a set number of parking spaces per unit for housing developments, providing the requisite number of affordable housing units. So to the extent that that is satisfied, then yes, that that leaves, you know, if 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 a basis for denial is is the lack of parking spaces and to the extent that the applicant has satisfied the requirements under state law, then the findings of the commission, yeah, that that would be a difficult finding to make, you know, to i- if that were to be the case.
Okay, I I appreciate that input. That's what I was looking for. That's what I suspected. I I will, I will not let this commission make a a decision that ends up being against the law. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alcorn. Any other commissioners?
Chair, if I may, I will just, you probably are all aware of this. So in this case, this project will go to the city council. So your vote tonight is for a recommendation to the city council and they will have the final decision on it. And it's it's because it's a density thing. Michael, am I correct? I think because the density bonus is involved, then and also affordability, it goes to the city council.
That is correct, Director Thomas.
So Planning Director, Director Thomas. So with respect to one of the earlier speakers contention about a hundred and fourteen units as being possible, is that actually doable, you know, with within the site, the site itself without nip and tuck in the last quarter inch?
Yeah, that was a very interesting comment. I'm not sure where those numbers were coming from. Of course, we're at at different times, there may be different projects proposed for a site or just different estimates made. But we we really, you know, we we review this project for what it is. And I will add that, you know, I'm not an affordable housing expert, but I do know that in California and elsewhere, the funding for affordable housing is extremely complex. And as you heard tonight, part of the timing of this project is so that it can receive an entitlement and time for, you know, an application for certain type of funding. And I know that builders of affordable housing are always looking for those dollars and often time their projects in accordance with certain, being able to meet certain requirements for a certain type of funding. And that's certainly the the case here. So whether or not we could fit, you know, that many units on this side or, you know, the the city would, in most cases, would welcome more units. But this is the project that we have before us and the developer has, you know, indicated that it's they're able to build it at this size, at this location with these amenities at this time. So that's that's what we're reviewing now.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners, any other commissioners have comments? You know, don't see any, you know, as Chair, I, you know, it's like a two sides of me pulling. You know, we we're we're kind of using a suburban location in the in the urbanization process here. And parking is is a premium. And understand, you know, the the pull and tuck on that on that end. Given that we we don't have a really a pathways to to make a finding based on state legislation. I guess that's the, I guess that that's a no way to that to that effect. You know, I think that the applicant has the potential, you know, to use the the parking lifts if necessary, because that's been widely employed, you know, within the urban, you know, urban settings, you know, to increase parking capacities if necessary. But, you know, given the given the the water table height issues in Mel Peters, we we cannot go down below where we are on grade. So, you know, I'm I'm troubled by the by the state mandate. And there's a pathway to it, but also at the same time, understanding the, you know, it is one of this situation. So my comment. Thank you very much. And any other commissioner comments, discussion points?
Through the chair?
Please.
Just for clarification, I'd like to ask the city attorney. So you're saying we cannot deny the project based off of the parking findings because of the state mandate, correct?
I'm I'm not saying you can't deny it. The 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 commission is is free to make its decision. I'm just saying that if it were to deny it, the findings would have to be, you know, based on, the set of findings would have to be based on on state law considerations. And so if we were to have to present that, you know, there would have to be a basis for that. And if to the extent that the findings conflict with state law, then, you know, those findings would would not be upheld. So the commission is free to make its decision. I'm I'm only advising that to the extent the project has satisfied the requirements of the parking requirements of the density bonus law, then it may be difficult for the commission to justify those findings, you know, as a basis for denial.
Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing no further discussions, any commissioners would like to make a motion on the on this matter? Any motions, please? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion just to proceed with the vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Bilan. And this avoids me from asking again. Thank you. The floor is yours, Commissioner Bilan.
Let me let me pull it up real quick here.
Okay, take all the time you you need.
So I'll make a motion to bring to vote a resolution of the planning commission. I'm sorry, resolution number twenty-one dash zero one four. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Mel Peters recommending to the city council approval of site development permit number SD one nine dash zero zero one four. Density bonus permit number DB one nine dash zero 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 one. Tree removal permit number TR one nine dash zero zero two nine. And environmental assessment number EA one nine dash zero 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 seven to allow the demolition of an existing industrial building, removal of three protected trees and development of a six-story, one-hundred percent affordable housing project with up to eighty-five multifamily residential units and a ground floor parking garage with forty-eight vehicle parking spaces and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet of public and private open and recreational space on a one-point-one acre parcel located within the transit area-specific plan, Mel Peters Metro-specific plan area at three oh eight Sangio Court and making findings of sequel exemption.
Second, and that was a mouthful.
Well, I I did I did inform Commissioner Bilan all the time he need. Well, I, I did, I did, uh, inform Commissioner Bellon all the time he need. So, so we have a motion by Commissioner Bellon and a second by Commissioner Alcorn. So uh, we'll go ahead to go down the line for commissioners' votes. Uh, so Commissioner Albana?
Uh, it's just a hard one. Um, although I know that we also need affordable housing and also we need also parking being, it's an issue about parking. Uh, I'd like to abstain.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, can I have Commissioner Galan your vote, please?
Aye.
Okay, and Commissioner Siradella?
Nay, for the reason I stated. And, uh, I'm gonna be on the, on the phone with our state people tomorrow, because this is just unreasonable. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Bellon?
Uh, I'm gonna abstain as well.
Okay, Commissioner Alcorn?
Voting yes.
Okay, and, uh, Vice Chair Tron?
I'm gonna vote, um, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, and, uh,
And for that reasons is, is, you know, probably because of the, uh, the parking and the potential, uh, traffic it could cause.
Okay, and Chair, we'll go for aye here. So, uh, uh, City Attorney, uh, what is the, the final vote count? If I can re- request your, your tally?
I believe it's, um, looks like three yes, two abstain and two no.
That's correct. That, I got that too also, City Attorney.
Okay.
Thank you for the concurrence, Ms. Medina. So the motion fails, um, this matter and, uh,
I believe the motion, I think that
We have three, three ayes.
Yeah, but because of the two abstain, I believe that's a pass.
Not sure. I, I think you're right on that. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's correct. It doesn't require a supermajority, so it's just a simple majority of the available voters.
Okay, so we have three ayes in the, in the, um, two, uh, two abstains and, and one?
And two noes.
Two noes?
Two noes.
Okay, okay, so the motion passes on. This is, uh, this is close. So, well, Mr. Kelly, you have definitely heard, um, you know, the commission's, commission's concerns. And I think, uh, you know, given this such a split decision that's rendered by the Planning Commission, uh, I will request your, uh, taking to understand the, the commission's, uh, I guess displeasures, you know, Chair was very vacillated, you know, with, uh, the oscillation was, fan was still running at, at a time when he said aye. So, you know, I am, you know, state mandated or not, you know, this is, uh, we're in a suburban environment with, in the, with an urban project per se, uh, or almost urban project and, uh, uh, your, your, uh, and your management team's attention to how to solve the, the issues that we know it's gonna be there. It's gonna be a paramount issue so that do not, do not make us come back and, and, uh, and ask you to be, to be better neighbors in the future.
And understood, you know, and thank you for your consideration. Um, you know, we still have another hearing ahead of us. Um, so this will give us some time to roll up our, you know, roll up our sleeves and, um, you know, just see if there's any other moves that can be made, you know, to make for a more, you know, efficient parking situation. We certainly want and plan, uh, to be good neighbors there with everybody and, um, we'll, we'll talk to the pastor and any other neighbors that are interested to see if there's a way to collaborate together. So our goal is, you know, unequivocally to be good neighbors and to be good partners with the city. So thank you again for your consideration. We appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Kelly, like I said, I'll mark your words for it and you're being recorded, so I under- understand this will be, will live in perpetuity. And we, we will look to you and your team to be, to truly live up to the words that which you have just, uh, ascribed, you know, for public records.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, uh, new business. Uh, there's no items there and, uh, a little legal needs here. Any person aggrieved by any final decision of any board, commission, or department head to the City of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the City Council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fees, fee. Uh, the time limit shall be strictly enforced. And the next agenda item here is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Bellon. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Siradella, in the honor favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, well, meeting's adjourned. What, commissioners, thank you very much for your, your time this evening. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, to the next meeting in August. And thank you for all other staff members, uh, in the, uh, with the City of Milpitas, uh, who attended this evening's, uh, um, uh, of a hearing. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Have a nice Fourth of July, everybody.